Can as well.
Recording in progress.
We're in?
We are two more in the waiting room, but yep, we are all in now.
Great. Well, the Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, July 6th, 2022, please come to order. This meeting will be a hybrid Planning and zoning meeting hosted in person at the Daniel B. Green Community Center, 32 Church Street, Guilford, Connecticut, Monroe, Kentucky, second floor, as well as virtually by Zoom. During this meeting, our procedures will be as follows. One, when you first enter the Zoom meeting, you'll be in a virtual waiting room until the meeting host admits you. Two, please be aware that your camera, if you have one, and your microphone will be muted by the meeting host when you enter the meeting. You can turn on your camera at any time so that you can see, be seen by others when and if you choose to. In order to run an efficient and orderly meeting in this virtual environment, unless stated otherwise with the meeting chairman during the meeting, the meeting host will keep everyone other than the commission members muted. You will still be able to hear everything said about the commission members even if you are muted and/or your camera is not on. There will be opportunities for public comment during public hearings, and which public participants will be unmuted. Three, the secretary will read the call meeting as published according to Government Law Office Executive Order. Four, during the public hearing, the applicant will be invited to present the application, explain to the commission and others present what is being requested. The meeting host will share all related documents on the screen as needed. In addition, all applications and supporting materials for each application on the agenda are available through the public meeting calendar page of the town website, www.ci.gilford.cpt.us, and also through a direct link on Planning and Zoning. Five, comments of town agencies will be read for each application. If there are any, there will be clarifying questions from commissioners. Six, there will then be an opportunity for clarifying questions from the audience. Please raise your hand to the Zoom platform and make some call on and unmuted. As this public hearing must be recorded, it is necessary for speakers to identify themselves each time they speak by stating their name and address. Seven, after all clarifying questions are exhausted, those who wish to speak in support of the application will be asked to come forward, state their name and address for the record and make a statement. Then those who wish to speak in opposition to the application will be asked to come forward and make their statement. Eight, the applicant will then have an opportunity to address any questions or concerns raised by the public or commissioners. Nine, once the public hearing is closed, the applicant is free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearings and the regular meeting, during which the commission will try to reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as to the decision of this commission and has the right to appeal to Superior Court if desired. Ten, decisions of this meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling Planning and Zoning Department at (203) 453-8039, or by emailing planning.zoning@ci.gilford.cpt.us after 9:00 AM. Eleven, all actions taken on applications tonight by this commission will be by roll call. All commissioners and staff will identify themselves before speaking. Seated this evening are following members, but please identify themselves. Kevin Clark?
Here.
Bill Freeman is not here tonight. Ted Sands? Philip Johnson?
Present.
Sean Cosgrove?
Vote.
Frank DeAndrea?
Present and accounted for.
I'm Scott Edmund, Chair. Our two alternates are Jason Marching?
Vote.
And Larry Rizzolo?
Here.
I think, which of you did, when, last time we had this, I think we had Jason Marching was the one that was seated, if I remember correctly. So I think one of Larry, he's seated tonight. Staff, present are Jamie Stein, Town Planner.
Good evening.
Um, Scott, can I, can I, can I, I think we have seven.
Right, correct. We're dismissing Phil Freeman out of our own seven.
Right, so, okay.
So we just have one alternate who's seated.
Yeah, sorry.
No problem. Lisa PMP, both Planning and Zoning Administration Assistant, and Peter Schultz, VDR. This meeting will be recorded via the Zoom platform and made available to the town website for viewing. The secretary will not read the legal notes.
Evening. Notice is hereby given that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold an in-person, and in-person, hybrid public hearing on July 6th, 2022 at 7:30 PM at the Daniel B. Green, or 32 Church Street, Guilford, Connecticut, Monroe, Kentucky, room on second floor. You may also join this meeting via Zoom. Following applications will be heard, Jake Cherry Street, 397 Church Street, map 74 lot 9, zone I-1, site plan and special per- medical office. Ew Holmes LLC, 4 Woodville Street, map 8 lot 5, zone I-1. Special permit modification to merge two units into a single unit along with some wider facade changes. L M Barry Capper, 101 West Lane, map 5 lot 31. Zone 6, special permit and site plan for barn, 4A, A Barn over Southern B. These are these applications available for inspection in the Planning and Zoning Office and on the town website, At Cherry's persons may be, may attend by either turn or via web connection and shall be heard. Correspondence will be submitted to planning.zoning@ci.gilford.cpt.us. 24 hours prior to the meeting day, documents are available in the Planning and Zoning Office, (203) 453-8639 for assistance. Date, Guilford, Connecticut, 14th day of June, 2022, start at 7:00.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Johnson.
I think we have everyone seated, is that correct?
Phil Freeman is not here today.
Right, but we have Scott, Sean, Larry, Ted, Kevin, Phil, and Jason, all seven, is that correct?
Yeah, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and Larry's seven.
Okay, just.
He's in his last name.
Right, uh, but he's seated though, because he sounds right.
No, you have eight people here tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
You didn't say my name, Phil, but that's okay.
Oh, Frank, my, Frank. I disrespect you by doing that, my, my bad. Sorry.
Frank, 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 you're, you're, you're a member now, Frank.
You're never, I'm, I'm so, I've never been happier to not be in person with you.
Entertainer motion to open our public hearing.
Don't move.
Second?
All in favor, if you say aye.
Aye.
Vote, aye.
All votes. Motion carries. First item on our agenda is David Toddlet, 158 Wild Rose Avenue, map 70 lot 2, zone R-6, special permit for 520 square foot accessory apartment. Is anyone here to, oh, I see you.
Yeah, I know, I know. Thought I'd be zooming, but I'm here in person, thanks.
I can bring up your, um, I can bring up your drawing if you'd like.
Sure, I spoke last week and, I'm sorry, last month at that meeting. So my property is living, is listed as at 720 square feet, and I had a garage behind there. I've been there since 1989. Somewhere in the 90s tore that down, which is somewhere around what I would like to build back there, which is a, just one room. My daughter calls it a granny hut, but just a single floor, the drawings, we looked at them last week, I think we have them again.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
Uh, Scott, can you pull them up? My computer is just not, not feeling it right now, sorry.
Anybody who's not prepared, but as we speak, I'll try to get them.
Yeah, if you can get it.
Sure, I have, um, yeah, I have it in hand, but, um, just, just a quick repeat what I did last month. What I said was that this is strictly, uh, my wife and I have made a commitment to stay here. We've been on that property since 89. It's 720 square foot living space, so we want family and also have no steps. And, and honestly, um, I'm rushing, we're not rushing, I'm pushing on this now, uh, because I, I retired. We want to stay in the area. My wife has some mid-phase dementia, and we want to be home, and there are no steps. And so it's perfect, and family can visit, so that's the proposal. And if the drawings, I think we're complete on everything, uh, and, and everybody's been great, and we're upgrading our septic, and, and all, all things according. I, I, I don't believe I need to go over all that, um, obviously, take your time. And Lisa and the crew in the town have been great, so, um, I don't know anything else I should elaborate on.
I believe, Lisa, can you help us out? Do we have any, um, documents or letters for this? And Scott, are you having some trouble or?
I'm there, just a second.
What's the address, can Scott?
There are some memos, Jamie.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. It's 158 Wild Rose Avenue?
158 Wild Rose.
I, I've got, I've got the first memo from my reading. Should I put it in the game?
Yep, that's what I'm just doing.
So this is, uh, July 5th, uh, to Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission, Town Planner, right, Guilford, 158 Wild Rose Avenue, Guilford, Connecticut, 06437, accessory map 70 lot 2. The applicant's proposal to construct approximately 440 square accessory apartment on a hillside. No sedimentation and erosion control measures or store, or management features are shown on the site plan. We are going to make sure that the final, that the natural resources are protected under the valid conditions of rule. And the site, uh, that sometimes sort of state available to install, downgraded, and proposed accessory apartment, the type of, zoning enforcement officers should be notified and inspect the sedimentation, erosion control measures, and the site work. Anyway, two by two, I believe, two foot by two, um, two, two inches?
A feet.
Two feet.
Two feet, yeah, two, two feet by two feet, crushed stone, stone in operation trench to be installed on the recline of the accessory structure.
Miss, miss, thank you, Sean. Mr. Toddlet, do you have any issue with those stipulations from?
No, I, yeah. Two stipulations were to move the septic tank up in, behind my house where the, uh, your department wanted it, and hook up with city water, which I've already, give them the money and permit and the trench and all that. They've sent that to the builder. So, I mean, we're ready, obviously, we need to be permitted, but that's the two issues. We're put it where you want it, which we're very happy with, and hook up the city water.
Scott, there's a memo here from Shirley Minkins.
Yes, yes, please.
This is from Planning, to Planning and Zoning, Shirley Minkins, RS, June 14th, 2022. One, my name is Wild Rose Ave, map 70 lot 2, essential department, the health department is working with the engineer of this application. They will be installing a new septic system for the existing well and applying for a central exception. The application will be approved as long as the abandoned, as long as they abandon the existing well of the city water, Shirley Minkins, RS.
That's what, that's the part that Mr. Toddlet just mentioned.
Yeah, we've already got that signed up for. So, I'm glad to get city water.
For the record, you will not regret going to city water.
I've been there a while, dug my well three times, I'm glad to get city water.
Um, so for everyone's benefit, let me just clear up the site plan. So this is the tier, drive, and then this is the post building. Any questions from commissioners? I have none.
I have none.
Hey, any, uh, I'll remind everyone that this is a second public hearing for this special permit. So is there any questions from the audience?
I see none.
Have we, have we had any, uh, letters against this application?
Uh, I have not seen any, Lisa, or, yeah, Lisa and Jamie are both shaking their heads now. Anyone, were you saying about somebody having a question?
Uh, there are no questions in the audience.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any online. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak in favor of this application? And is there anyone in the public that would want to speak against this application? Seeing.
I guess I would also remind everyone that if you're, uh, if you're muted and you don't have your camera on, we can't see you. So if, if, if you want to speak in favor or against, please unmute and/or put your camera on if you have one. Sorry, Scott.
Thank you for that. Um, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing on this item.
I'll move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your second.
Thank you.
Roll call, vote. Kevin Plutter?
Aye.
Ted Sands, you did say, said you're muted.
Andrew?
Uh, I vote yes.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Phil Johnson?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Aye.
Right, Andrea?
Aye.
Larry Rizzolo?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Toddlet. We'll act on this tonight. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, Mirza Akhtar, 72 Stepstone Hill Road, map 91 lot 30, C4, zone R-5, special permit for a one-bedroom, 772 square foot, after the fact accessory apartment. Is there representation for Mr. Akhtar?
There, there is a email, I believe, that was sent on July 3rd.
Jamie, do you miss any of the students planning on being here?
He, he didn't show up at the last meeting, correct?
Well, well, hold on a second. My office didn't provide the accurate Zoom link at the last meeting, so that caused some trouble for a lot of individuals. However, following that meeting, I did speak directly with Mr. Akhtar on the phone. We confirmed that the meeting would take place today, July 6th, and I confirmed that the Zoom link that he had is indeed the one for this evening. Since then, I haven't heard anything. Lisa, do you, have you heard?
I have not, I have not talked, no.
And so, and I, I think that, uh, this letter that Phil referenced, um, was from someone who's not available to be here tonight. Did some of the, uh, the email.
Yes, thank you, Sean. At the last meeting, we did have some members in the audience who were wishing to speak regarding this application. We did not, uh, allow them to do so last meeting, and we had offered the opportunity to either join again in person this evening or send in a letter for this evening.
Given, given there's no representation from the applicant, Scott, I might make a motion to table to our next meeting?
I do believe that there are two people in the audience who wish to speak regarding this application.
Right, so if we don't have an app, if we don't, if we don't have any presentation from the applicant, I don't think it's fair to, to, to bring in public comment until the applicant has presented their application.
Right, um.
Is there, is there, is there some kind of deadline for the applicant to show up, you know?
Yeah, that's a good point. Where, where are we with our 65-day deadline?
Well, you have a deadline, now we have to open, we have to actually, this, like, publicly discuss, yes.
I would, I would agree.
Can we go to the next meeting, uh, item, and then return to this if he shows up?
There's, you know, there's a fair amount of next items, so we can do that.
Scott, would you entertain a question from the audience about the application?
Just about the application in general?
It's not, it's not, nah, it's, there's still going on there, and I thought there was a stop.
Oh, I can, uh, I, I believe that I, I can field this question, if you feel it is okay. Hold on, there is a Ms. Kathy O'Boyle waiting to join, perhaps she has some relevant information?
I, I know, Jamie, that you've been feeling some procedural questions like that from the public in the last two weeks. So we could just have you continue to field that question outside of the actual public hearing on this item, so I would entertain a motion to adjust our, uh, public hearing agenda to have Mr. Akhtar's, um, application be at the end of the public hearing section.
So vote.
So do.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All votes. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is Anthony Angelio, Capacota, 160 Woodbury Lane, map 108 lot 5, zone R-8, special permit for accessory apartment. So is someone here to represent, um, chief of spec? So.
This, this might be a problem with our link issues.
There's a lot of people on the call. So this is a continuation from our last meeting. If you can bring up their folder, please.
Was there any outstanding questions from this applicant that need to be answered for tonight? Because he wasn't at the last meeting in person.
Okay, this, this, if, just to remind everyone, this one, uh, there was not really any questions outstanding. Remember, this was, um, a new build, and he's adding a, uh, an in-law suite as part of his new build. I believe this was the, technically the in-law suite that was being added. I don't remember there being any questions or, or comments from the public during our last public meeting.
There was a quick memo, Scott, from, from Shirley Minkins.
Go with that.
Very, very quick. Can I go and read it then?
Yes, please.
Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, Shirley Minkins, RS, July 6th, 2022, 160 Woodbury Lane, map 108 lot 5. The revised engineer plan dated 12/3/21 was approved by the health department for a three-bedroom home with a one-bedroom in-law apartment. Shirley Minkins, RS.
Got you, there it is. No votes to talk to me, okay. That's what happens when you put me in charge of multiple things, I won't go. All right.
As I recall, the reason we continued this was so that the public could comment.
Correct, uh, so.
I think we need to allow the applicant to make the presentation before we have public comment.
I'm honestly not sure what the proper procedure is, um.
Well, the, the applicant made the presentation at the last meeting.
Correct.
And the reason this was continued was that there was some problem with the linkage, so we couldn't waive the second hearing.
Correct. I, I feel comfortable just seeing if there's any public, is there public comment, and we'll kind of, we can decide from there what to do. Seeing as I don't believe there's any comment from the commissioners, um, is there any public comment? Anyone that would want to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of this application? Seeing none, and I believe, uh, Lisa and Jamie, we haven't received any emails or phone calls related to this application in the last two weeks. So I guess I would take the temperature of the commission, are we comfortable that everything's been properly discussed on this case? All right, I have a motion, as a result, I have a motion, uh, entertain a motion to end the public hearing on this item.
Vote, so.
Second.
Uh, roll call, vote. Kevin Clark?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Philip Johnson?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
Larry Rizzolo?
Yes.
And I have also voted yes. We'll act on this this evening. Next item on the agenda is, uh, Jake's Cherry Street LLC, 370, 397 Church Street, map 74, lot 9, zone I-1, site plan and special permit for dental slash medical office. Who's here to represent Jake's Cherry Street?
Uh, we're not, Mario Al is here, but, yes, are you able to hear me clearly?
Yes, we can hear you now, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, um, for the record, my name is Mario Al. I'm a partner at the law firm, Virgil Moses, with offices in Milford, in Westport, Connecticut. And I represent the applicant Jake's Cherry Street LLC, which is an entity that's owned and operated by Dr. Joseph Tartagni, who is a principal, um, at the dental practice, at the full-service dental practice, Shoreline Dental. He operates that practice along with his son, uh, Dr. Jason Tartagni. Our time is, uh, kind of, a new location for their Shoreline Dental practice here in Guilford at the subject property. They, um, chose this property a few years ago, um, to expand their, their, uh, practice to the shoreline area where they also, where they already have many patients. And, um, the, the project is primarily intended, uh, for a new location for Shoreline Dental. They currently operate, uh, professional offices at, uh, or in, um, in Milford and West Haven, and this would be their third location. This is an application for a site plan and special permit to construct a new professional office building with approximately 9,700 square feet of usable area, with 44 parking spaces, including two handicap spaces. Certainly in this, um, environment, over the last number of years, um, within Connecticut, there hasn't been a lot of developments for new, new professional office space, so this is certainly an exciting project. This project will be a vast improvement for the property. A new state-of-the-art, effective office building will be built to replace the existing older office structure that currently exists on the property. There will also be other improvements to the property, including enhanced landscaping. When we first met with your Planning and Zoning staff to review and discuss the conceptual site plan for this project, the design that we showed them provided for access to and from the lot, um, to be provided solely on the subject property. And, and your staff at that initial meeting aptly pointed out that it could be an improvement, um, for the area, particularly for this property, if we're able to approach the neighboring art center about obtaining an easement over their property for a shared driveway that would allow for improved access to and from the subject property. The shared driveway design could be even better and safer access to and from the property. So we approached the yard center, and they graciously agreed to work with us, principally through the council, Keith Ainsworth, um, and they, uh, worked with us to come up with an agreement to provide for a, uh, share, an easement for a shared driveway. We have not yet executed that agreement. We will do so, finalize that, and do so shortly if we're able to receive your approval. Quite frankly, um, we consider the art center to be partners in this project. They've been really great, um, to work with us on the project. They, they've certainly had a lot of, uh, a lot of comments. They've put a lot of time and effort into reviewing the project and providing their input, um, throughout this process, which has gone on for, for over a year now. Many of the suggestions for changes to the project design, sometimes costing the applicant more money, but we've agreed to do so, that have been suggested by the art center have been, have been in fact implemented in the final project design. For example, just to highlight six changes that were made to the. Uh, for example, uh, just to highlight six changes that were made to the project design in response to requests from the art center. Um, the, the design will provide for the installation of paper, paper walkway connecting the, um, subject property, uh, the subject parking lot to the, um, Guilford Art Center access driveway. Location was moved multiple times to accommodate, uh, requests made by the art center. Overflow, overflow parking for the art center will be provided at the subject property for events during off, during, uh, off-hours, um, when, when the, when the office is closed. And quite frankly, there's a good partnership here and, and, and the two owners working together, um, and, and, and providing for overflow parking. Um, at our property for, for the art center is, uh, a, a, a good example of that partnership. Um, we are, we've provided a landscaping plan, um, for their review and comment and made changes per their requests on the landscaping plan. We've revised the type of light fixtures for the site, lighting based upon their comments. And we've provided a, um, a pervious paper driveway right at the entrance to the site, um, as they have requested. Um, so we certainly want to, uh, continue to be good partners with them on this project. And we really hope that the art center and others in the area are, are, are proud of the project that gets developed here. With that being said, um, to, to, to provide for a more technical review of the project design, to answer any questions that you had about that, I wanted to introduce the, um, folks that I have with me here this evening. Um, Kurt Lohenstein, who is a senior project manager at the, uh, engineering firm, Landtech, which is based out of Westport, Connecticut. Also with me this evening is Wayne Garrick, an architect at Wayne Garrick Associates out of New Haven. So, um, without further ado, I'd like to ask Mr. Lohenstein to proceed with his presentation.
Thank you, Mario. Uh, good evening, everyone, for the record, Kurt Lohenstein, uh, Landtech, our offices are in Westport, Connecticut. Um, licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. Uh, and is it possible for me to share this for me, Jamie?
Yep.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Uh, so this property is in between the Guilford Art Center and the medical office building across the street from the Guilford Police Station?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure of a bearing on, on.
Currently, it has single-family residents currently standing on the property.
Got it, and it, it might have meant like, uh, uh, a law office or something of that nature?
That is, that's correct. It's been operated as a professional office for many years. My attorney, Yelka Towski, recently retired, um, and, and so it's been used as a professional office building. Obviously, an outdated, uh, design, uh, which is a conversion from a.
A little bit.
To convert, convert it from a single-family home, so, so the, this project will be a vast improvement, um, the new build, the state-of-the-art building that would replace the existing building on the property.
Thanks, just want to make sure I was, like, thinking about the, the correct location.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Is my screen sharing with everybody?
Yes.
Perfect, so to your point, um, site is located all the way to fifty-eight on Church Street. Uh, Church Street is a state road, the Guilford Art Center is, is to the back here, um, and then this is that access way that, uh, Mario had mentioned that we'll be, uh, sharing with them now. Uh, the existing structure is going to be moved, as well as the access driveway and the curb cut. Um, so by relocating the curb cut off of the common access driveway for the art center, we'll be cleaning up what currently is, uh, a hazard uh, for, uh, traffic coming in and out. Um, the new medical office will be providing, uh, as Mario mentioned, forty-four spaces to suit the requirements for the use and the size of the building that conforms with the Guilford zoning regulations. Um, it will be serviced by public water and an onsite septic system that will be under the western parking area. That system has already been reviewed and approved by your health department. Um, the storm yard design as well has been reviewed and approved by the engineering department for Guilford. Um, we're providing two separate drainage systems, uh, one underground retention system in the center of the property and then a lesser system, uh, stone reservoir underneath the, the eastern parking area. Both systems are sized to attenuate up to the hundred-year design storm, um, which goes hand in hand with part of our request with the special permit is we are in excess of the pervious area. Uh, permitting zone, with section two seventy-three, uh, dash forty-eight D does permit, um, at the discretion of your commission to waive that if a sufficient stormwater management plan is being provided, uh, reviewed and approved by your engineering department, which, uh, at this point in time has. Um, we will be providing an extensive, uh, landscaping plan that's been reviewed by the in-law weapons commission for the portions that are within the upper review area. To the east, there's a small weapon pocket just off, uh, the southeastern corner of the property. Um, desire review committee, we were for them twice, um, and received very positive in, uh, uh, input from them, which we incorporated to the plan that's before you now. Uh, site lighting, uh, will be provided as well, which, that for you. Um, as Mario mentioned, we have had some feedback from the art center as far as the specific light fixtures that we'll be using. Um, we've made those modifications in the plans that are before you. Um, soil erosion, sediment controls will be established and present throughout the entire construction process. Um, there'll be silt fencing between the disturbed areas and the wetlands, of course, to protect that buffer. Um, all construction access will be off of the common driveway, um, servicing the art center. Uh, and the, uh, soil stockpile will be located onsite as well, outside the upper review area. Um, other than that, uh, there's a Connecticut DOT sidewalk project that's currently, uh, ongoing. We do show it on the plan, um, for clarity, although that's being handled by the, uh, the DOT in, uh, in the town. Uh, but we just wanted to ship that on for clarity. Um, with that, uh, if there's any questions on specifics of the plan, I'm happy to address them. Um, and then we also have Wayne, uh, on with us as well, if there's any specific questions about the building.
Scott, is, is this a zone change, or is this a privately done property, correct?
Correct, it's in I-1 zone.
Okay.
Um, Larry, to Jason. Larry, if you can mute it.
Sorry, could you say a little bit more about the design of the lights and properties of the lights?
As far as the specifics of the fixtures, or?
Yeah, are they, uh, uh, I'm.
Dark sky.
Is it about, um, uh, light pollution?
Right, these would all have to conform to the dark sky requirements. Uh, they'll be shielded, so they won't be leakage off of the property boundaries. Um, the site lighting, you know, big picture-wise is very minimal. Uh, Dr. Tartagni's business operates generally between eight and five, five-thirty. Um, so we've provided enough so to, so it's safe moving, you know, to and from the building to the cars parked. Um, but this won't be like a major shopping center where you're having, you know, large site lights where you're worrying about light pollution, um, moving off the property.
Thank you.
Uh, if there are any other specific questions to the site, should we, let's hear from the architects?
Have we, have we, sort of the British plan?
Yeah, you, you discussed that there were two drainage lines that you could go there and turn.
Sure, yeah, I can go into a little bit more detail. Um, so the western portion of the site mainly consists in a parking lot. Um, there's a catch basin in the northwest corner that will pick up runoff from those areas. Uh, that'll be directed into this underground retention system here. Um, there's there, consisting of, uh, co, underground concrete chambers that are rated to, uh, be beneath the parking lot, so they won't be damaged by any traffic. Um, and then that will discharge to this catch basin in the northeast corner. And then any overflow will be metered out over a, a riprap plunge pool, uh, apron here. And then will be directed towards the northeast corner. There's a natural swale, um, that exists today and that will be maintained throughout construction and in the final condition. Um, to prevent any runoff from leaking towards the Guilford Art Center. That was one of the concerns that I know was brought up, uh, when we were for the design review committee. Um, so we've added more detail, um, to direct the contractors, um, that this is the intent of the plan, to keep the water flowing this way. The eastern portion and the root area of the new building, uh, will be connected into a twelve-inch gravel base, crushed stone gravel base. Um, and that'll have a perforated pipe manifold connected to distribute the flow evenly throughout the gravel. Um, and again, this has a, a catch base maneuver flow, uh, in the northeast corner, riprap to prevent, um, you know, reduce that any velocity that may be coming out of there, and then it'll sheet flow towards the elements.
And you, you said.
Existing.
You, you used the term meter, does that mean there's a pump that, that actually measures the amount of flow?
No, not metered in, in that sense. Um, what I mean is, it'll prove, it's not a free flow condition. It, as the water level has to rise up, as the storage hits fill, mo, the majority of it will be infiltrated. Um, it's varied, all the storms up to the hundred-year storm are actually infiltrated very little for the hundred-year storm that will actually come out of here. But when I say meter, as the level rises, it will slowly trickle over the, the edge of the catch basin, uh, into this riprap, uh, pad here, which is further dissipated so that it acts just as sheet flow, same as it, when it rains, it flows over the grass. That's what we're, uh, what we'll be simulating here, uh, by different means.
So, um, I'm not sure who, um, among the audience or commission members are right there. I think that, uh, there is a natural stream that is to the, to the east. It's a swale, as I think, um, was mentioned. And that was south. It must, it has to be under Route ninety-five. I, I, I'm not sure whether it goes under ninety-five by conlet or what, but it ends up, you know, down Church Street. So I just want to be clear that we're not creating a, uh, different flow problem?
No, we're maintaining the existing flow paths on-site. And in the proposed conditions, we're actually reducing the overall runoff rate, uh, that is leaving the site. So we analyze it on the basis of where the, where we identified where the discharge points are naturally on-site. And then in the proposed condition, we're essentially mimicking that, other than the additional runoff that's generated by the, the increase in pervious areas that we're proposing to construct. That additional runoff gets routed into the detention systems, which primarily infiltrate them. Uh, very minimal is, is, is coming out. And then, yeah, it's reducing the overall rate, so that it's not creating in that any adverse impacts.
But the, but the pervious surface, it is golden and over, if, in the sixty percent, compared to some rating?
Sixty-four. But we are mitigating the, the, from the stormwater threat, that we're mitigating the increase with the compensation of the drainage. So that's offsetting the additional runoff that would be generated if, if we weren't providing any, for example. But because we're providing a substantial stormwater, uh, detention, we're then reducing that, uh, that volume, that net.
Uh, you described, uh, water off the roof running into this retention system, how about water landing on the parking lot?
Yes, all the water that would land on the parking lot will also be picked up. We have catch basins positioned throughout the, uh, the parking lot and then the grading will direct water, uh, into those catch basins. And then the catch basins are connected, um, pipe, connected to the detention systems, uh, with piping. So we have catch basin in the northeast or northwest corner that will collect the western portion and, you know, probably, probably half of the front portion of the driveway. And then we have catch basins at the throat of the driveway entrance for any water that, uh, makes its way through the entrance, catching it before it goes into the common driveway. And then we have catch basins located all along the eastern portion of the, uh, parking area that will collect the water that's directed.
Yeah, I, I, I believe one of the, yeah, I can believe one of the commissions of approval is a maintenance department for them.
Sure, that's not a problem.
Right.
Yep, you can provide that.
Any questions from commissioners related to site plan?
I do, Scott.
Yep, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. Kevin Clark for the commission. My question would be for probably mainly my fellow commission members who went on the commission for a while, they may have, um, some experience with this. But I'm curious, since we're exceeding the normal maximum allowable pervious surface here on this site. In fact, my first question is, how often is that act, that request actually asked for? And how often is it actually granted? Is it a common request? Not common? Anybody know? Have you guys seen this that much?
Jamie or, or Phil, they're around the longest. I don't know if Phil's.
I'll say, like, where I'm going with it is, is that you guys have experienced with this, where a site had asked for a waiver to the existing pervious surface limits. And it was granted based on the fact that the applicant was going to mitigate the extra stormwater. If, if there was any, if they all worked well. So is there any case situations where you can look back, you know what? We approved it here, they said they were going to mitigate it, but they didn't. And you know what? Because of that, we're going to look closely at these things in the future. I'm just, that's where I was going with it.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm recalling.
Okay.
I may, I may, uh, Mr. Clark, um, just to address the issue that you brought up. With regard to the waiver, it was something that was suggested a while ago in, in a meeting with your staff on, in, in, in reviewing the project. Um, it is a, a standard practice. I can't, I, I don't call before the, the Guilford commission, um, as, as much as I'm before other commissions, um, in, in southern Connecticut. But, uh, uh, the, the waiver is common in other, in other, uh, municipalities. Um, but also the mitigation techniques that are designed for the project, they work. And, and quite frankly, my experience in working with Landtech is that they do a lot of projects in, um, Westward and Weston and Wilton and, um, uh, Norwalk and Greenwich, et cetera, and, and in areas where there's just not a lot of land. And they're required to get creative in the design, uh, for things like stormwater runoff. Uh, so, um, we feel confident about the, um, the design to, to address those issues. And quite frankly, um, I think it's just helpful to put on the record as well, that Dr. Tartagni has made clear that he wants it to work as well and to work well. Because have excess water on the property is a problem for him, as principally as a property owner. So he's made clear, you know, his desire to have, um, a, 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 a stormwater management design that's, that's more than adequate. So it's not something he doesn't have to be concerned about in the future as well.
Uh, Mario, I don't know if you mentioned it in your original presentation, but can you state for the record the, the reason why you were looking for this additional pervious?
Um, well, I'm going to let Kurt address that as to from a design perspective. Uh, I, I believe in, um, you're referring to the, the, also wanting to keep with the number of parking spaces that are proposed, is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, so, so. So it's a function of the size of the building, uh, the required parking. And this is kind of where we, um, you know, this is the sweet spot in making the, the building work for the use that Dr. Tartagni is, is looking for and then the supporting parking. And we initially, as as Mario said, we did meet with staff because we were, you know, we identified this early on that, you know, this is something that the waiver is there, but, you know, typically, commissions may say good to see the variance, which we actually did originally. And as Mario said, we were advised by staff that the waiver would be the better option here. So that's the path we've gone down.
Okay. So I guess just to wrap it up. So I guess, Scott, just to consider if I kind of learned what's going on with this commission. So somebody could technically develop a site with 90% impervious surface as long as they can prove that they can mitigate the stormwater with the remaining 10% of non-impervious surface, correct? Is that the truth?
That'd be more of a question for Jamie, but I believe that's case. Jamie?
Sure, yeah, I can field that. So per the zoning regulations, this zone does have an allowable impervious coverage, which is, I think, about 40%. And if they were at that coverage, it would be a site plan application. Since they are exceeding the standards for this zone, I believe the proposed impervious coverage is upwards of 65%. It becomes a special permit application, and it is through that special permit application that you can propose to exceed. We don't put a restriction on how much you exceed it or how little you exceed it.
And so I would add just to put into language terms and Kurt, obviously, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the the design is basically for these these two different storage systems to actually hold up to a 3-year storm within the storage system and then it slowly dissipates on its own through the system, correct? So that's that's what they mean by up to 100 years storm. They're literally just holding the water off site and letting it actually dissipate as it normally would.
That's correct.
And so the overflows is literally for a storm that would be more than 100 years. And that's the showing of overflow. Does that make sense, Kevin?
Totally, yes, thank you very much. No, I understand it pretty well. We went we went through this pretty pretty well with the wetlands commission, the line two with Colm. So I have a good understanding of what's going on. I just.
Yeah, not just you, it's it's making it easy for everyone. Do we have any questions related to the site or we want to ask the.
Larry Rizlo for the commission.
Sure.
The use of this is for dental practice, but there's a whole second floor that's empty. Can you talk a little more about what's the use of the second floor?
Yes, sir. The intended use of the second floor is for another tenancy. It may be one associated with shoreline dental practice. But whatever tenant goes there would be one that would have to be that would be it would be a use that would complement the the existing use for shoreline dental on the first floor. So it would be another professional office, presumably something similar. There's there's lots of different options, but it would be something that would that would enhance, you know, the the location for shoreline. So there, you know.
So i- in principle, you could have a smaller building with a smaller footprint in the tenure. The applicant would be using both the first and second floor. In principle, wouldn't you do that?
Probably not to the extent that, you know, and just for my background, I do a lot of evaluation work throughout the state, representing a number of communities in Connecticut on on valuation work. The project's got to pencil out, quite frankly. And so this is a project that because you have an owner operator as a tenant, it could pencil out. This is not this is an expensive project to construct. The Dr. Tartaghi hasn't skipped on anything as far as design, wanting to do things the right way, including the stormwater design that that's been described here already. So it it the answer to your question, I I would I would not make that assumption. There's a minimum size to to make the project or for the dollars and set standpoint as well.
Thank you.
Good. Continue your presentation.
You said everyone is satisfied question wise on the site plan? Should we bring Wayne and run you guys through the the building a little bit?
Sure.
Wayne, I can bring millions up if you want to.
Yes, please.
Direct me around.
Okay. Yes, good evening. My name is Wayne Garrett. I'm an architect. My office is located at 291 Whitney Avenue in Bay New Haven. I've been in my own practice for 42 years now. The concept for the building, based upon a footprint allowed by result of parking requirements as well as the setback requirements. So that book generated the maximum size of the building in progress. We we took the approach that Guilford is a very historic town, but it's also been the cutting edge of architectural design for many, many years. Certainly, many well-known global architects reside in Guilford and some of the work that's been produced for the town has been on the traditional side as well as the contemporary side. The concept, as I began to mention, for this project was to actually minimize to a certain degree the visual impact of the building. So on one hand, the short side, the 36-foot wide side, is facing the the street, the road, and the longer side is parallel with the site. But what we did was we adopted a form known as Adams Colonial, which is a well-known form from the early 19th century and divided this building essentially into to read or to appear as three separate pavilions. And each pavilion is 36 feet by 40 feet with an eight-foot space between the the forms and two feet deep to articulate the three buildings or the three pavilions. The the idea behind this is that the by dividing this into three separate forms in the long direction, it minimizes the the scale and enhances the proportions of of a building of this size. The floor plate is approximately 4,852 square feet per floor. Having said that, the the form is itself very traditional, being almost square and with a hip roof that pitches in four directions on each pavilion. The the hip roof's pitched to basically what I call a cupola to the top of the building of each pavilion. And those cupolas will be utilized for mechanical equipment so that they're perfectly screened from 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 any water or anything visually and so that we don't have to locate any of the mechanical equipment such as condensing units on the ground or all the rooftop units. The the buildings themselves, though, are very contemporary in their design, mostly to reflect the contemporary nature of the doctor's practice. As Mr. Capola has already mentioned, shoreline dental is well-known for for his practice. They've been professionals for many, many years, and they're known for the quality of of their practice. And and the same for this building. Dr. Tartaghi wanted this building to reflect his forward thinking, how he approaches his practice, and and be contemporary in nature. So on one hand, we've synthesized the traditional form of Adams Colonial with a contemporary expression. We did meet with the design review committee. We had two meetings with them. And as Kurt has already alluded to, they made several very constructive suggestions, and we had no objection. And they've been incorporated into the final plans or the plans that are before you this evening as a welcome change. I felt that the dialogue that we had with them enhanced the overall design, though I mean, there are minor details, but they were easily incorporated and basically didn't impact the program for which the doctor is trying to achieve. And it certainly was able to be done on our end from an architectural standpoint. The building is very simple. The roof material is a standing seam metal roof. And the siding, there are only three materials in the entire exterior of the building. The metal standing seam roof, the E panel, which is the siding, and the E of the panel aligns with the standing seam of the roof. And just basic ordinary insulated glass. Those are the three very simple materials. So we we feel that the the building overall is reflective of the history of Guilford as well as the needs of Dr. Tartaghi.
Thank you. Kurt, if you would mind stopping and sharing so that we can see everyone on screen. Thank you. Any any additional questions from commissioners? Phil, outside.
There's simply a lot of how many dentists, the dentists, correct?
Yes.
How many dentists will be actually practicing in the building versus hygienists and other support staff?
By the way, Commissioner Johnson, Dr. Tartaghi is on with us this evening, so maybe I can respond to that. Thank you.
And I think you can bring up the first floor plan too, if it's possible.
Well, there's so there's two floors, right?
Yes. Kurt, do you have the third floor plan? There are eight operatories in in this particular plan. I think, like Mr. Capola alluded to, Dr. Tartaghi can answer how many dentists would actually be.
Yeah. As I kind of looks like there's 12 on a row.
No, there's 12. No, there's there are, I believe there are eight operatories and there are x-ray.
So just just to respond, having been a patient with shoreline dental for over 30 years, approximately 30 years, I can tell you that the operation, it's a it's a multifaceted dental practice that includes orthodontics, cosmetic surgery. They do sleep apparatus. For example, I was able to free myself from snore, being able to get a mouthpiece to be able to to solve that problem. So the actual number of dentists versus hygienists depends on on the schedule for a particular day, whether there's surgery being done, orthodontics, general dentistry. It really depends on what the schedule is for that day. But it's a it's a full-service dental practice that includes, again, orthodontics, cosmetic surgery, and other cutting-edge uses such as the 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 sleep apparatus, the mouthpiece, and and other other things that get that will hopefully, I guess, get developed with the practice in years to come.
And let me stand corrected, you are correct, there are 12 operatories.
That's on the first floor?
On the first floor.
And would the second floor be somewhat reflective of that also?
Not for this practice, that's my understanding, but I'll let the attorney and Dr. Tartaghi.
I can respond to that. We don't know what the tenant is going to be yet on the second floor. It's possible that shoreline can also occupy that as well. But right now, the plan is for shoreline dental to occupy the first floor, where there would be a tenant that is compatible with shoreline dental use on on the first floor. So it's going to it's going to be a really great opportunity for a potential tenant that wants to have a professional office or medical office at that location.
Thank you. Kurt, if you would mind undating again, appreciate that. Any other questions from commissioners?
I just have one, Scott. That has to do with increased traffic. There are new cyclists going in, there are new schoolchildren that will cross the street into the police station towards the camp and swim club. You know, I'm not sure what the future plans are for that. The intersection for pedestrian traffic, but I'm just one percent on traffic.
No, there has not been a traffic study, could not given required. Play frankly, for a project of this size, it would, I don't think it would be appropriate to require a traffic study. Again, what's being proposed here is a building of 9,700 square feet of usable area. It's not a it's not a substantially, it's not a large building. It's a fairly, the building is fairly modest in size for a lot that's approximately one acre in size. So it's a it's a it's a modest, it's a modest-sized building. And the zoning regulations are designed to allow for this size building with the presumed use, for example, for professional office or medical office, yielding a certain amount of of anticipated traffic onto and off the site on a regular day.
Thank you. Any questions from commissioners? All right, well, for questions from the public, if you have a question, you can turn on your video and raise your hand, or you can unmute yourself and make yourself known. So any questions from the public? Second page. Anyone there with you, Jamie?
No.
All right, is there anyone from the, we actually have a couple of letters that we should read into the record. Let's see if we can get Frank to read the one from Kevin McGee, environmental planner.
Sure. This is from Kevin McGee dated, let me see here, July 5, 2022. Even better, I'll look at my phone. Jakes Cherry Cherry Street LLC, 397 Turb Street, Guilford, Connecticut, Accessors Map 74, Lot 9. Jakes Cherry Street LLC, proposal to construct a two-story, 9,704-square-foot medical office building. The applicant has requested an exemption for exceeding the impervious surface requirements for an island zone. To meet the requirements of the exemption, the applicant is proposing to install a stormwater management system consisting of roof leaders and catch basins discharging to an underground infiltration system designed to infiltrate up to 25-year storm. The plans for the project have sedimentation and erosion control procedures that are in compliance with 273-97B subsection six of the zoning regulations. Inland wetlands are located on the east side of the property. At the inland wetlands meeting on February 9, 2022, that the Guilford Inland and Wetlands Commission approved and regulated activity for that, the Guilford Inland Wetlands Commission approves regular activity with the conditions for 397 Church Street, Map 74, Lot 3, regulated activity. Construction of a new 9,726-square-foot medical office building with associated site improvements including stormwater drainage, parking and landscaping within 100-foot jurisdiction review zone. I recommend the following conditions of approval in order to make sure that the natural resources are protected. One, a licensed engineer should oversee the installation of the stormwater. One, a licensed engineer shall oversee the installation of the stormwater management system. The licensed engineer shall provide a final report to the zoning enforcement officer. Two, the town Guilford zoning enforcement officer shall be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to any site work. Soil stockpiles should be contained by silt fencing and/or hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed in the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement. Three, to assure the future compliance of stormwater management system in accordance to section 273-75.F of the Zone Code A. A written maintenance and operational manual for the stormwater management systems located at the site. The manager should provide provisions for yearly inspection and maintenance of the stormwater system and yearly reports to the town engineer. The maintenance schedule should include, but not limited to, weekly, monthly, quarterly inspections of the property for litter, monitoring the dumpster, dumpster and outside storage areas, monitoring of the catch basins, the removal of accumulated material and non-native invasive species in the detention basins, and energy dissipator. The maintenance plan needs to provide a statement that the stormwater management plan will be reviewed annually so that the inspection maintenance requirements may be modified and that any changes to the plan will require approval by the town engineer. B, and quote unquote, as Belt Rowling end goal of the completed stormwater system prepared in accordance with section 273-75.F Stormwater Management Subsection 6 instruction. C, the out of inch file maintenance covenant on the land records as required by the section 273-75.F Stormwater Management Subsection 7, maintenance covenants of the Town Guilford Zone Code.
Um, there's another one here from Shirley Mickens from this project. Uh, we have her from Mr. Ted Sanders.
Uh, okay. Um... This is the one from, uh, Shirley Mickens.
Correct, it's up on your screen.
Yes, says the health department has approved this application. A person, uh, a person of, of few words.
Yes. And, 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 you got a tough one.
I got it. I got, I got the hard one last time. Get a monster last time.
You, you...
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What would be the, they're asking, obviously, a group, variance from the, from the impermeable surface regulation?
Correct.
What is the, I see the requested amount, what is the, um, allowed amount?
Forty.
Jamie, you want to confirm?
Four zero. Four zero.
Four zero what?
Percent.
Forty percent.
Forty percent. And so what is, what is nine thousand something, something?
No, 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 it's the, they, they, the, the, the regulation is forty percent and the applicant is at sixty-five. But I have a question, uh, relating to the letter that was just previously written, uh, by the, uh, environmental group, uh, of the, of the town. And they talked about that the stormwater system was good enough for a twenty-five-year storm. But the presentation that we heard tonight from, uh, Land Tech was talking about a hundred-year storm and I believe there's a significant difference between those two. Can somebody clarify what's going on here?
Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Sanders, I was going to correct the record. Uh, I think that's the type of, it's, uh, in his letter. The design has been, um, for the hundred-year storm since the original submission to Inland Wetlands. Um, so we can just confer, circle back with, uh, Mr. Maggie to have him, uh, correct the letter. Um, we're happy to, you know, all those submission materials are with, uh, are with everyone. Uh, and you'll see on the second page of the, um, the stormwater report, uh, that shows all the outflows up to the hundred-year storm, the one, two, ten, twenty-five, and one hundred-year.
And if I may, just add, um, for those of us who've been involved with this application for a while now, um, that there was a, a lot of discussion regarding stormwater runoff issues at the Inland Wetlands Commission. Quite frankly, there was discussion, consideration of issues that probably within the purview of this commission already at Inland Wetlands and commitments made, um, for us to comply with various conditions, some of which were proposed by the art center's attorney, Mr. Ains, Attorney Ainsworth. Um, quite frankly, as I said to my client, some of the things were, some of the conditions were, um, maybe unnecessary, however, um, you know, if it gives everybody a, um, more assurance that, that there's not going to be issues here with stormwater runoff, et cetera, then I, 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 I didn't have an issue with recommending that, that we accept those conditions. And we did back then, and it seems to have been repeated here. I'm just seeing this letter for the first time this evening. But we've consistently maintained the position of, you know, if it's a, if it's something reasonable that we're asked to do, we'll, we'll do it. And, and, and again, that's what was also discussed in Inland Wetlands.
Great. Um, any other question, commissioners here? Uh, I'll open it up again for, if there's any more people that has a question they would like to ask. Seeing none, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak in favor of this? Mr. Benman, do you have a question?
Uh, good evening, everyone, I'd like to speak in that, that, to environmental. I believe as we started to go through, the, there were correspondence that came in to the, the commissioner, to the town.
Correct, there's, I have your letter that was sent to me.
Right, just after Commissioner Sanders read that, uh, you were going to read the next letter into the record.
So the next letter, I, I assume that's, is it a, is it a question or is it a note of opposition?
It is an opposition to the application.
So, yeah, if you don't, um, I'm just sort of going to first ask if there was anyone that has, uh, anything they want to say in support of the...
Okay, I'll start with that, I'll wait.
Thanks. I'm not seeing anyone on the, so is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Um, I think we, judging the letter being four pages long, I would, I would, uh, propose that you could read it into the record, uh, if that is fine with you. Sir?
Uh, hi, Steve Benman, again, from environmental, for the record. Uh, I actually wrote this letter, uh...
I'll, I'll share it so everyone can see it.
On behalf of the, uh, property owner, uh, Brockway Holdings. Uh, the owner of Brockway Holdings is actually also here at the meeting. Uh, I believe he had wanted to go to speak, uh, also against the application. I'll let maybe him give, uh, overview unless you actually want or need the letter to be written or read into the record, I can do that.
So, so, sir, it's, it's your option, um, if you want it fully written in the record, we can do that, otherwise you can just summarize your concerns.
Well, why don't I do this? I'll, um, I'll, I'll let Mr. Marquesi, who's the owner of Brockway Holdings, speak. I think he had some general statements or view of concerns, I'll let him speak before, um, you know, I go ahead. And if, uh, there's any questions that come out of his, uh, discussion, I'm happy to help from a technical standpoint or engineering standpoint.
Sure, well, I got a question first. What property owner are we talking about?
Uh, so this is the property to the south, this is 385 Church Street.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so I think it originally, uh, it was referenced as the medical building to the south. Uh, it's, that's one use, but there's also, uh, there's multi-tenants in that building.
So it's a little bit based on the first floor?
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Uh, so Mr. Marquesi, would you, uh, please state your name and address of the...
Yeah, this is, uh, Chris Marquesi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, my name is Chris Marquesi, I'm the owner of, uh, 385 Church Street, which is the Brockway Professional Center. Um, and as Steve said, uh, which is...
And, 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 uh, Chris, can you just state your address?
My, my office address is 385 Church Street. Is it, would you like anything more than that, home address as well, or just my office?
That's fine.
Thank you.
So, uh, to start off with, we are not opposed directly to the redevelopment of this property. I actually see the development as a plus as long as it's nominated properly. The existing property is a bit, um, we'll say, neglected or worn down a little bit. So, uh, if we do something new, the way it is, it would be a positive, um, I think positive for the town and positive for, for us. But with that said, we want to sit down, uh, in a responsible manner. Uh, I, I've heard a lot about the percentage, the special exception or the waiver from the impermeableness of the surface. And that's really the central issue here for us and the attendant issues surrounding that. Um, the applicant proposes to go from a requirement under the regulations of forty percent to nearly sixty-five percent. That, that's not insignificant, that, that's very significant to go from that level to such a higher level. Um, and, and you gotta ask, what, what is driving that? Uh, and what are the impacts of that? And I just want to make sure it's very clear that the regulations don't just say, uh, you can submit a stormwater plan and that addresses everything. It actually says, uh, in order to weigh the maximum impermeable area standard, uh, the commission can do so when it finds the parcel will be better served by allowing greater percentage of the perfect surface and with the submission of a stormwater management plan. So it's a bit, it's got two parts to that. And I think that opens up not just the stormwater component, uh, which the applicant has submitted a plan. We've looked at it, um, I personally have some concerns, uh, not with the surface runoff, but, uh, the applicant described the infiltration. So we're going from a runoff into the wetlands. And when we say go wetland, it's the wetland that I own, not the applicant's wetland. It's completely on my property. So all of their runoff will go onto my wetland. And, uh, yes, they are attenuating that infiltration system. But since we're still close to the wetlands, in fact, some of the parking is within the regulated area, that will go infiltrate into the groundwater and the groundwater is in direct proximity to the wetlands. So you get a causally direct relationship with the, uh, with the infiltration and the, the wetlands nearby. I'll also say, our outer building has a partial basement in it. And, uh, as the applicant has proposed, we have problems with infiltration even with a line in there. So when there's high flows, high, significant precipitation, perhaps, you see the water table rise dramatically, uh, in the groundwater and we see that there's problems in the basement. So I want to, I want to make that clear that this is not, yes, you're going from a ground with, from a surface water runoff, uh, creating a solution for that. But you're putting it into the groundwater and groundwater directly communicates with the wellin that is immediately adjacent to, uh, to their, their project. Um, beyond that, uh, you, you know, the other component of what I would like to talk about is really what the, going from forty percent to sixty-five percent, what that allows. So at forty percent, the, the developer can develop this property in a certain manner, uh, most likely can develop it for their practice, um, but not necessarily have that second floor for rental income. So the trade-off that, that we have is a much more aggressively developed property, um, more building, more parking, more sidewalks, less, less permeable surface and the other impacts along with that. Um, so I specifically want to talk about some of the concerns that I have. And I, I have to say that there seemed to be a lot of discussion about how the developer's team worked with the Guilford Art Center. And that's great, uh, but I have never been contacted, uh, I'm directly adjacent to it. I will see the back of their building, I will see their dumpster, and they're directly discharging into my wetlands. So it is, it's quite perplexing that we, I was not contacted. I, I'm certainly willing to sit down and talk and try and come up with a reasonable solution to the issue here. But if you look at the site plan, you will see that the entire property is clear. Uh, and pretty much all vegetation is, is clear. Uh, we have a line of trees in between my property and this property. It's, a lot of them are very mature maple trees. Uh, I wouldn't hazard a guess the height of the wood. Street mature, they're probably, uh, you know, forty, fifty, sixty feet in height. Uh, that line of trees that I went out there today is directed to the property line. In fact, there's a fence line that runs on that property, it's a perfectly built fence line lined in between the trees. And in fact, many of those posts, fence have been integrated, the wire and the, uh, the other fence components have been integrated into the trees, grown around. Though there is a question as to what trees are coming down and whose trees they are, what responsibility both parties have. Personally, I, I find having the buffer between the two properties with mature maples and other trees to be, and, to be, I haven't taken this, I'm a little bit as a property owner up to the town. Matter of fact, when I developed my property, it was encouraged that we made mature trees and we did exactly that in front of the property. We didn't take down oak trees or maple trees and we put up orange trees. Um, so that tree line is really important to me and I will need to talk to the owner and/or its representatives, uh, so that we can come to an understanding. Uh, the issue that I have is that you really should have a setback from those, at least the drip line, if not greater, preserve those trees. We can leave that environment of corridor, shading effect, buffer effect, the harmony with the town and as it looks. We don't want this to be, uh, an area that's super developed. It's a really nice area of town, I think we should try to keep it that way. Uh, Berkeley goes right up to the property boundary. And in order to do that, they have to put in a retaining wall. So the tree line largely comes down, a retaining wall to put up right up on the property boundary. Uh, and along most of that length, the southern length, which is quite extensive. Uh, and then there's a guardrail of some sort on top of that, uh, parking right up against it. And then you'll often see the dumpster, it's against our southern property boundary. Currently, if you go out there today, I cannot even see that property. Neighbor Bose is completely opening it up, showing this backside of their building, putting parking, retaining walls, dumpster, directly up against it. And it's, like I said, very odd that we were not contacted to describe, you know, to work with that on this. Uh, so I, I'll conclude by saying I am absolutely not adverse to development. Ever since beginning, I'm, I'm honest about that, just want it done the right way. And this shouldn't be just grandful, uh, to, to create rental income on a second floor that's actually not needed by the practice. Uh, and, uh, so, uh, with that, I'll, I'll take questions. But, um, my engineer Steve, if you have time, could also be available? Or Steve, fill out anything that I can still...
So I, I can open it up for, uh, for Mario and his team to respond. The first thing I'll just mention, just to be aware, uh, just to make you aware that, uh, this being a special permanent application is a requirement of it, uh, having to publish hearings. Uh, so this item is, yeah, guaranteed to be moving to our next meeting as well. Um, and the hope that we as a committee would have with that would be that you and the applicant can get together in that time, uh, and discuss some of these issues for sure. But please, and Mario, if you'd, if you could, uh, um, some answers to some of Chris's questions? You can put them up.
Oh, first of all, um, as, as I stated earlier, this project has been, um, for the various, uh, town bodies for approximately, for probably over a year now. Um, the, the general leader spoke this evening, um, and voiced his concerns. Um, had an opportunity to reach out to us over the past year to, uh, to let us know about what his concerns are so that we can make an effort to try to see if we can resolve those. My understanding was that the prior... My understanding was that the prior owner of the property, who I believe made the initial applicant, when we filed the initial application with the wetlands, Attorney Gail Kattowski had actually spoken to Mr. Marquesi a few times and about the project. And that, my recollection was that she had said at one point that there was not a willingness to work with us to discuss the project and that he was interested in purchasing the property prior to Dr. Tarkadyuk, my recollection. So again, there has been an opportunity to reach out over the last year of us and we're certainly more than happy to work with him now and see if we can resolve concerns that he has regarding the project. With regard to the concerns voiced pertaining to the ill wetlands, again, that ship sailed a long time ago. The ill wetlands commission has approved the project. And there was a full review of any impact on the ill wetlands as part of that application process. Impact on the wetlands is not within the purview of this commission for this special permit and site plan application. With regard to some of the other issues that were, or claims that were made with regard to the effect of providing a waiver here, we have not seen any engineering testimony or report to back up those claims. It's my understanding that something was submitted in the record this evening. Is that correct? Scott, is that correct, that something was submitted this evening?
Do you need me to answer that question?
I believe Mr. Copola may be referring to the letter, the four-page letter that we received from Triton that Mr. Ben Ben referenced earlier. Is that what you're?
Was that, was that received, was that received today in the record?
Like, if.
We have not had an opportunity yet to see that, see that on the record. And we certainly can provide comment and response. But with regard to the claims about the concerns about providing a waiver here, again, it's an engineer plan that has been reviewed by the town staff, including the town engineer, which has not raised concern, concerns about the proposed project here, which would include the waiver. If I may at this time ask our engineer, please respond to some of the comments that were made as well.
Kurt Longstein from the record. You know, it's, there was a number of things that were brought up by Mr. Marquesi, so I'm going to attempt to go off of memory. I would like to reserve full response to once I've had an opportunity to review that letter so I can properly review them. But, you know, we are providing an extensive amount of stormwater detention here. We're adhering to all standard practice or engineering as Mr. Ben Ben can attest as far as separation distances go. We're not providing conservative infiltration rates. Our stormwater detention, both of it, is outside of the open review area. We're splitting it out. And, you know, I don't feel that there is going to be a negative impact to the wetlands in my opinion. And like I said, I'd like an opportunity to review Triton's letter and provide responses at our next meeting. Other than that, if there's any other specifics, Mr. Marquesi, that you brought up, you know, I'm happy to address them as again, that's just the main ones that stuck out in my head. As far as any issues you're having, water infiltration into your basement areas, I can't speak to that. Our property is, you know, your building is quite a few, you know, quite a distance away from where we are, so the conditions may be different on your property. But the arsenal our design is, is designed to address the conditions on our side and I think our report and documentation proves that.
Mr. Ben Ben, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I would actually. Steve Benben, the MP from Triton Environmental. Just a couple of things that Kurt Copola mentioned. Last year, I understand that the applicant, they have discussed this with the town, as he said, over the last year or so. Triton, well, I should say Broadway hired Triton about a year ago also, when they received a public notice that the applicant had put in an application of this property. It had to do, at that point, they had submitted a site plan review with a waiver. It was almost identical to this site plan with the exception of where the access drives come out on Church Street. They did not have the access, the connection to the Art Center driveway. It came out onto Route 77 directly. However, the layout of the building and parking were nearly identical and they were looking for a waiver at that point through the zoning board of appeals. We submitted, at that time, July of 2021, we submitted a letter to the zoning board of appeals, again, basically saying the same thing that we said tonight in the letter that we actually submitted to the town on July 1st. I think the town would receive it until July 4th, I think is when it was received. But regardless, we submitted that letter and then the application, as far as we understood, there was no further action on it. I believe it got withdrawn. There wasn't a lot of, there's not a lot of detail on that plan than there was in the current one. But so we did have the opportunity, Triton and Broadway did have the opportunity to address the application at that point. It was then withdrawn and then we hadn't heard anything again on the application until we again received the notice for the, as an utter, with the current application. Again, Attorney Copola mentioned the plan was approved and stormwater management plan was approved through the ill wetlands and by the engineering department of the town. You should say that that application, we never had the opportunity to speak at that meeting. It was not done in a public hearing. We were not, Triton, or sorry, Broadway was not notified of the application going before the wetlands commission at that point. This was again, the first opportunity that we had to speak on this application as it came before this commission. So, you know, as far as those concerns, again, we just haven't had that opportunity. And for instance, say that, you know, that boat has sailed or that we had opportunities over the last year to discuss this, it really isn't the case as far as we knew the application not forward as the last year and didn't have the opportunity to speak on it. So I just wanted to just address those couple of things, Kurt Copola. Again, we were informed that the stormwater plan, stormwater management plan had already been approved. So our letter doesn't address that as, you know, we do have concerns with it. I can note a couple of those, but again, I don't know if those are a moot point at this point because of, you know, engineering department already approving that stormwater plan. But as you mentioned, as Chris Marquesi mentioned, you know, it's not just addressing the stormwater impacts through infiltration or detention or what have you. Again, as Mr. Marquesi mentioned, it's a two-part. One is submitting to show that they can handle water. The other is, the commission feels that that lot would better serve with the increase in pervious area. So to go from, again, forty to sixty-four point nine percent, this is not a small deviation, right? And again, Mr. Copola also mentioned, you know, that these things are done all the time, as he says. But to say these things are done all the time, I think is a little misleading. You know, as an engineer myself, you know, I've asked for waivers, I've asked for exemption, but we're talking, you know, two percent, three percent, you know, five percent deviations from the standards, not twenty-five percent, you know, deviation from that standard. So again, this is.
Or fifty percent.
Right. You know, I mean, right. I mean, do we want to set a precedent? You know, I mean Guilford, I'm a resident myself in Guilford. And, you know, and as a resident, you know, do we want to set up a precedent? And I think Mr. Commissioner Clark mentioned, you know, is it okay if someone who developed eighty percent or ninety percent if they submit something that says well there won't be impacts from stormwater? You know, it's not just that. It also goes to, we should feel that this lot's better served with the increasing pervious surfaces. And again, we're talking pavement, you know, and it's not just about stormwater. It's also about environmental effects, about aesthetics of the property, about ways to soften the look of the property with additional landscaping, you know, the density of the slopes versus concrete retaining walls, which is what they're proposing. So, you know, the US Commission, you don't have to just say, well, they submitted a stormwater report, they're handling the hundred-year storm, therefore it's okay. There's, you know, you as a planning zoning commission, you know, you have the power to say, well, that's not enough. And again, as a resident, that's what I would like to hear, that we don't want to set a precedent that it's okay to overdevelop or aggressively develop. This lot is a small lot to begin with and suited for smaller development. And they can do that with this property. They can have a smaller building, which would then require less parking and less pervious services. So again, we're not opposed to developing the property, just not with the size and scope of what's going here. If I can just take a second to address what Mr. Lowenstein mentioned about the stormwater plan, that it needs the all standard practices, engineering practices, that nature. One thing that they do discuss in the plan is that they have this infiltration system. Well, infiltration systems only work if the underlying soils aren't clogged, don't get clogged with sediment. The way that any design manual or design engineer would deal with those sediments getting into an infiltration system and clogging the mine where the water goes is to have some sort of pretreatment system ahead of your main detention system. This plan doesn't include any sort of pretreatment devices to drop out the things that get washed off of the parking lot, you know, the sand, the salt in the winter time, it's just dirt that gets carried in, you know, we all have, all parking lots developed, you know, sediment, there's trash to get thrown. So what you don't want is those things to be then washed into the detention system and in this case, be underground. It's out of sight, out of mind. You don't know there's a problem until there's a problem, right? It stops working efficiently, it stops the culture fading, they start backing up. So that's one thing. The other thing that I mentioned that I noticed here and Mr. Lowenstein referred to as well is that they have concrete gallars underneath the parking lot, which I'll assume that those were designed properly and they're rated for traffic loading. You know, they still have a minimum amount of coverage, generally about eight inches for concrete structures, did not be affected by heavy traffic loads, you know, or the vehicle loads. The system as to the east part of the property, that's not concrete. Those are corrugated plastic pipes set in, you know, aggregate. Those are still, those are not rated for traffic loading. Some of those pipes at the shallowest are within eight inches of the top of the pavement, top of the parking lot at the lowest points. And that's just the math that's shown on the plans. So, you know, is that appropriate? I don't know out of all the, you know, analysis that moved to that, but, you know, from first glance, and again, not doing a fine, you know, deep dive into the design calculations, again, as far as I understood, we understood, it was already approved by the town. But, you know, those are a couple of things that I saw off of, you know, off of a quick review. So, you know, happy to answer your question. I know I talked for a long time. Hopefully you're all still with me, but, you know, if you have any questions, welcome to their life. They're happy to do that.
Oh, I appreciate it. Thank you. I think I'll reiterate again that this is going to be going to a second meeting. I think, Mr. Copola, you have kind of your brushing orders there in terms of what they brought up in terms of the waiver of the extra impervious, not only that the water can be held, but also can you, you know, speak, the next time when you come, can you speak to this being an improvement to the land? I forget the exact term that was used in the regs. And I would assume that your team is also going to plan on hopefully reaching out to the other applicant, or to the gentlemen here and address some of their concerns or at least talk about some of their concerns at the next meeting.
We're more than happy to respond to that. We're more than happy.
Thank you.
To meet with Mr. Marquesi and Mr. Ben Ben both in advance, via video or phone, but also to have a meeting onsite with them, as we've done for other neighbors, anybody who's had a concern and wanted to review the project with us, we're happy to do it onsite as well. And we're more than happy to make a concerted effort to, regardless of what's required of us under the regulations. And I will point out that we do have the right to develop the property pursuant to your regulations irrespective of the waiver, for example, to construct a certain size building with certain purpose on the property. But regardless, we're more than happy to move with them and try to understand what their concerns are and to see to what extent we can help resolve those concerns and share with them information and provide our engineers to respond to some of their concerns, provide them with information, know if we can give them a better understanding of what we're proposing to do here and why. We're certainly, we're happy to try to do that. And right frankly, with the Art Center, we've spent a lot of time in our outreach and work with them and so we prove it, I think, to be good neighbors, hopefully coming into this project. And that is the intent of Dr. Tarkadyuk, not just buying the property to rent it, but rather to occupy it with his business that wants to be part of the community.
Thank you.
Bless you.
Yes, my worship back, I'm sorry.
If I may, just with regard to the ill wetlands, application was a public, we know this meeting ended, it was a public hearing. There were numerous people who came out and spoke at that meeting, a lot of people from the Art Center. So it was certainly a meeting that was publicly noticed and the public did come out to speak at it. But with all that being said, again, we're more than happy to try to work with them and address their concerns in advance in the next meeting.
Thank you. I'd like to see if there's anyone else from the public who would like to speak in opposition to this application. We have about ten minutes left of our tape, or we have to change over our tape. A reminder, if you do want to speak in opposition, either to wave or go on mute. Seeing none entertained, a move to tickets means our next meeting.
Hello.
Zacha. Earl Kalbo, Kevin Clark.
Yes.
Ted Sands.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove.
Hi.
Frank Andrew.
Hi.
Larry Roselo.
Yes.
Also, yes, thank you very much, everyone's words and attention to this. What do you think?
Thank you, everyone.
Do you want to switch the tape now or?
Yeah.
So.
Yep.
All right, so we're going to go into a brief recess. No business is going to be discussed in that time. We'll switch to other tape. Thank you.
Stand by.
Yep, go ahead, Theodore.
Okay, and we are back.
Great. We will resume our meeting. No business was discussed during the intermission related to. Next item on the agenda is Eagleview Homes LC 405, Westfield Street, M28, Lot 5, Zona I, one special permit modification to merge units two and three in Building A into a single unit along with some minor facade changes. Mr. Campagni, please discuss.
Yes, I'm Russell Campagni, CK Architects, 131 Lawson Street in Guilford, and I'm representing Eagleview Homes, my client. We were before you a little while ago now and saw a special permit as well. ago now, and saw a special permit as well as a site plan for development of twelve townhouse styled condominiums on four oh five Woodfield Street adjacent to Page's Lane. And we're sort of moving forward with the project and have had quite a bit of interest, and one of the buyers that put a deposit down has requested to actually purchase two of the units and merge them into a single unit. And so I'm here, I think, primarily because of that change, rose to a level where Jamie and some of the other staff felt that we should get a modification to our existing special permit for this because of the level of change that that represents. The, there's a few other things, facade changes and other things that are associated with that, and a couple other development things that I'll go through quickly to deal. Is it best that I share my screen?
Yes, please.
Okay. I will do that. Okay, here you go. All right, so this is the site plan, Page's Lane runs along this side, the left side of the plan, and here's Woodfield Street along the front, if you recall, our septics are in the front and our guest parking, and then there's a second access that comes along the rear that has private garage access that goes into the back of each of the twelve units that were shown. The two that are being requested to merge are actually units two and three, and basically there's no exterior footprint change at all, it's just taking out the partition wall between the two buildings, or actually, it's a firewall between the two buildings, and actually turning it into a single unit, and it's really being done in a way structurally that I don't think would ever be converted back into two separate units, it would take quite a bit of work to do so. So with that said, it really doesn't impact any of our site drainage or coverage in any major way, the only change that did occur is one of the buyers requested a little bit more space on the terraces, and actually asked if we could cantilever the terraces by two feet further out over the bearing wall below, and under the zoning code of Guilford, you can actually have a second floor balcony projection of up to thirty-six inches without accounting for lot coverage. So that we did add into the plan as part of this, it doesn't change our statistics on the project at all, it just is something to note that was a change. And then the only other minor change in coverage is there are front balconies that we actually connected, and so we infill a little bit of space between the two front balconies, and that counted towards lot coverage change on this particular unit. The other thing I should note is we're only submitted and moving forward with building permits for buildings A and building B, building C, if you recall, sits in a limousine, so it is a little bit lower and has breakaway walls underneath, et cetera. So this is actually on hold and will watch market courses and such as to when we proceed with that, so we're right now only proceeding with buildings A and B, holding this obviously with our approvals, but that's not current permitting. If you look at the layouts, I'll quickly look and go through, they're gonna have a four car garage, they'll come in through a lower entry area, they gain a library space, some additional storage, and a larger mechanical room to service the scale of the new combined unit. The second floor has a very open rear plan, has the sort of forty-eight foot access out onto the terrace with a similar layout of the sliders that we had before, with two rooms up front, a little bit different change in the way that we have them laid out compared to the typical units that are adjacent to them, and then, as I said, we combine the front balcony into the center portion of it, so that there's access from one side to study that gives access across the whole of that front balcony. The next floor up has one, two guest bedrooms, and then a larger master suite in the rear that gets the view, a single made bedroom, so overall, the unit has been reduced from six bedrooms that were in the two units to five official bedrooms in the way that it's laid out, but we are actually utilizing that extra septic capacity because this particular client wants to have food grinders in their sinks, and that is basically counts as a bedroom in septic design, so they will be utilizing all of the septic they had originally allocated to them. The uppermost level, the sort of attic level, has a little bit larger bonus room, and then two bedroom suites on the third floor here with the two balconies that were already designed in, no real change to the roof. From a vantage point of looking at the front facade, it just has the same architectural styling, but has the combined balcony across the front, we are only putting one front door in, the other turned into a French door, and we changed the landscaping a little bit and took the path to the door away, so that this is a little bit more private from the walkway and public parking. They asked for double windows to match the end unit, so these used to show one window and now they show two. And on the back, there's that two foot cantilever that expanded the, all of the balconies, and we're actually representing that for all of the units. And then there's just the change associated with adding this walkout balcony that wasn't shown on our original submission, it's the same scale and size as the other balconies that we have on there, it's just they asked for two balconies as opposed to one. So that's, I think, the extent, there's not much that's really, these are, that's just showing the small cantilever, let me just zoom in here a bit. So this is that small cantilever of two feet that you can see on the end unit, the other ones are sort of tucked behind, so you don't really see that cantilever, it actually protects the garage doors a little bit, so I actually think it's a pretty good, you know, a pretty good asset. I will mention that I was looking at the town website, and we also had submitted on the seventeenth, which I think was reported on the twentieth and approved from an email that was sent, also updates to the civil drawings that represent these changes, everything that has changed is represented in the architecturals that was in your packages and that is represented, but the town did receive these updated civil drawings as well, and there's nothing really to point out, it just represents that, that, you know, we're combining foundations here, and the cantilever balconies were noted on their plan, nothing really else changed because the overall lot coverage and impervious surface stayed the same. So that's the extent of the changes. One thing that I would mention, and sort of working back and forth with Jamie, we have found that these potential buyers are interested in making these more like single family homes rather than generic townhouse units, given the price point, so I would not be surprised if there were some small requests that came on future units as we went into negotiation. I think building A is pretty much fixed and we're moving forward because we're not really able to make much change, B will lag a little bit, and as buyers come in on that, there may be some requests, so I guess it would be helpful as to when something rises to a level that administratively can be approved within the site plan, and when it might be something that was necessary to come back before you. And we'll mention, we went back before design review as well, they were very happy with changes, felt in some ways it was improvements to diversify the facade a little bit, so they were, I think, generally pleased and felt it was a little, that we didn't need to necessarily go back before them, and I guess for you, I would love to hear a little feedback about where those thresholds might be to help to instruct, you know, Jamie and the rest of the staff as to when it demands a new public hearing and when it's something that staff could handle.
Thanks, Russ, appreciate it. Jamie, I know I've had, Jamie's on this, and this is something that we're working on. It's kind of, as you can imagine, it's hard to put an exact, put like an exact signpost and say this is, this is what it is. Jamie, I don't know if you've had a, if you've been able to come up with anything in the last couple weeks of how to describe.
Well, yeah, thank you, Scott, I mean, I think that the, as the commission knows, sort of trying to codify in a way the ability to do administrative modifications, approvals, administratively is something that we've been working on in the office, this one represents kind of two ideas, one is that our zoning regulations do not explicitly give the ability to administratively modify special permits, so something to consider in future, I do, that was a common practice in New Haven, I do see it as something that we can do here in future, but that is an issue that was raised by some of our other staff.
Jamie, is that something to bring up with Glenn?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I'm sure, I'm happy to bring that up with Glenn, I think it would be a good thing to add to our zoning regulations rewrite. The second piece here that I think tonight's public hearing has shown us for this particular modification is that, you know, if there was going to be significant public opposition, I think we would have heard it, so perhaps if in future for this project there is a similar modification that is requested, the commission may want to consider allowing it to be reviewed administratively, particularly because through this process, I think we learned that design review was comfortable with that type of modification, and seeing how you all respond is also very helpful to.
I guess, I guess, my personal concerns, I worry about you going out on some thin ice and approving things, and then after the fact, potentially being criticized, but I mean, I don't, I don't see this as that, that problem, but on a going forward basis, that's, that would be a bit of a concern for me, I don't want to see you be vulnerable for some administrative approval, but.
Yeah, thank you, Phil, understood.
I will give a little history, actually, there was an initial, we had some additional development, went to the air source sea pumps that I was speaking about, which actually took away a couple of condensers and moved some things around, we added a public meter panel for the common, there were a couple of things that were administratively approved that were very minor, just additions, so we went through a first round when we got our full mechanical and electrical and plumbing design drawings together, that Jamie, that was staff, and actually did feel was within bounds, I think it was primarily the change from twelve units that were presented to eleven units being the threshold, and maybe that is something that rises to a level of change. It is a reduction, but maybe that's not what you want, maybe you want more density, so that is something that I agree probably, you know, word is coming back if there's a change of the number of units, but that, you know, I don't, I wonder whether there was a way, like, for instance, if we get another person coming forward that's asking for a combined unit in a similar way in B, is that something that would have to come back if we were asking, you know, to go to ten units and we had a similar request, would we need to come back before you for this, or is there a way that maybe into the motion, you know, that could be discussed as a potential? I, again, it's not necessary, nobody's come forward that way, and it kind of is kind of, you know, for me, I'd rather have the twelve frankly, and not, you know, they're already four thousand square feet, having eight thousand square feet in the unit.
So can I ask a question, how many square feet are each of these units?
They're four thousands, they're four thou, they're just shy of four thousand square feet, so the combined unit will be just shy, it'll be about seventy-eight.
So there are four units in each building that are four thousand square feet?
Yeah, sure.
Our original proposal said they were gonna be fifty-nine hundred square feet for each of the buildings.
That's the floor plan, that's the footprint coverage, not the, not the FAR, it's, yeah, which is in our, which is in our charge, but that was, I believe, is the, is the lot coverage.
So that's the footprint, I mean, the footprint that you have in, and you go up the four stories?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, all right, nice, just wanted some, the math didn't seem to add up, I was like, there could be fourteen hundred square feet, now the, you know?
No, they're, they're, they're very, they're very large units, and, you know, we started at much smaller with our development, you know, a year and a half, two years ago, and every iteration, the feedback from buyers, and there's a lot of interest in these, you know, they're, they're actually, at the stage we're at, there's a lot of very interesting people in them, and, you know, they've got, they've received deposits, I think, on three. So, but I, I don't really want to, this is late and we don't need to.
I was just curious about the math.
And also, Russ, to answer your question, Jamie, actually, just before you spoke, you mentioned that this, what the commission thought about this specific scenario was to her, what she would do in the future for A B? I don't want to paraphrase, that's paraphrasing when you said, right, Jamie?
Uh, yes, you're paraphrasing, but I think you got the gist of it, thank you.
Any other commissioners have any questions related to this? I don't.
I do think Jason needs a thought.
Yeah, very comfortable. Okay, so, so hearing entertained, I'm just closing the public hearing, so. We'll do a vote.
There was a letter, Kevin McGee, there was a letter.
We do a letter, that's correct, but, Mr. Johnson, please.
Come on, pull it up.
Yep.
Uh, from Kevin McGee, environmental planner, special permit, Eagleview Homes LLC, four oh five Woodfield Street, Guilford, Connecticut, the seater's map twenty-eight lot five, Eagleview Homes LLC proposes combining units two and three in building A into one unit, which results in a change to the front entrance of the building that proposed, exterior changes are located away from the side of weapons and are already, and already being disturbed for construction, so there should be no increase in impact to coastal resources.
Thank you. Russ, are you gonna say something?
Well, I would ask if there's public, I see Jan, who's president of the, of the on club, and I also wanted to ask, before I forget, if there's a possibility of waiving the second hearing for this.
Yeah, Jamie, is this a double, this is regularly special permits, so we'd have two hearings, correct?
I still get tripped up on these special permit procedures, but I do believe that there could be two if you would like for.
Thanks, Russ, we will discuss, yes, if there are any questions from the public on the side, please unmute yourself if you have a question, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the application, and is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? All right, so commissioners, should we discuss whether we want to wave?
I think this kind of motion to waive the second public hearing. Second.
All favor, we will roll a roll of votes, Kevin Clark.
In favor.
Ted Sands.
I'm in favor.
Phil Johnson.
Yes.
Sean Gosgrove.
Aye.
Frank Andrew.
In favor.
Larry Zolo.
Yes.
And also a yes, they're here motion to close the public hearing outside.
Hello.
Come on.
Kevin Clark.
Yes.
Ted Sands.
Yes.
Phil Johnson.
Yes.
Sean Gosgrove.
Yes.
Frank Andrew.
Yes.
Larry Zolo.
Yes.
And also a yes, all activists this evening, thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is Rochelle and Barry Kaplan, one oh one West Lane, map five, lot thirty-one, R six, special permit and site plan for a barn over seven hundred square feet, who's here to discuss this?
Hi, my name's Guido Petra. Good evening, so I'm at, in giving the title Guilford at three, Wingate Road. My company is representing Barry and Rochelle Kaplan, one oh one West Lane, this evening, and we actually built the Kaplan residence in two thousand eight, they have a desire to construct an arm on their property, which is what's Barry's evening's application. With me this evening is Jason Tavak from Petra Construction, he's our in-house architectural draft person, and Chuck Mandal of Tom Stevens and Associates, who performed the land survey and the civil engineering work. Letters to a mother who sent in timely fashion, copies of the letters, their certificates were mailed, emailed to Lisa at the Applied Zoning Department, the proper signage for the public hearing was installed in timely fashion in front of the property, and at this point in time, I'd like to take the opportunity to be able to, let's see, take the screen, but I'd rather do this.
Okay, you should have permission.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Andrew, I said, you got it?
Think so. Yeah, okay. Can everyone see the screen?
It's loading up, I'm talking.
No, you can't.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can we start with this?
Okay, can we start with this site plan? By the way, this is a 14.66 acre piece of land. Very large piece of land for a single family residence. This is the main house of the Kaplans. This is their own house. He proposed barns located in this, in this location. The driveway is a very long driveway from West Lane up to a fork in the driveway. One fork continues to the garage level of the main house and the boathouse. And the right-hand fork continues to a automobile courtyard. It's in front of the main house. To the right of the entrance before the fork is a owner's garden, which dictated the location of the proposed barn, which as you can see, we're proposing that this get built within the existing slope conditions of the open space. No trees will be required to be removed because it is currently a grass area. The setbacks are, because this is such a large piece of property, you can see from our zoning table, it's an R6 zone, minimum lot size of 60,000 square feet. We actually have 638,000 square feet of property. All of our percentages are well within the requirements. We have maximal lottery coverage at 15%. And what is existing is 2.83%. We're proposing is only going to raise it to 3.03%. All of our statistics on the zoning table are well within the prescribed requirements, which are illustrated with all these lines for setbacks, clearly illustrated. Just to give you some idea of the footprint of the barn, 36 feet by 36 feet is the barn level, which is diagonally across from the existing area. And below that 36.6 inch barn area is a storage area at a lower level, which is built into a slope condition, as you can see here. So the lower level only has one elevation that daylights. The level that's of our level that is opposite the garden reads as one-story barn. At this point in time, I'd like to have Chuck Mandell and Chuck comment on the civil engineering.
Yeah, good evening Chuck Mandell, agent. Guido, do you have, okay, you can zoom in on the building, might be a little helpful for that. So we did receive a letter from Shirley Nickens, which can be read into the, as exhibits. We did receive approval, not approval for the site, for the actual septic, but we do, we did soil testing. So we did prove that we have suitable soil for a one-bedroom building. Although there won't be any bedrooms, it's really just going to be a half bath, sink and a toilet in the structure. We will be mitigating the stormwater to the roof with some galleys, subsurface galleys, and we do have the septic system shown to the north. The closest structure off the property is about 321 feet away from the barn, about to the east and then to the northwest, or about 426 feet from the nearest structure. And per Article 10 of zoning regulations, 273-80, E through F, we do conform to all the standards set forth for our special permit. It's a very, it's only a 3%, as we mentioned, we're only a 3% coverage where 15% is allowed on here. Still not, not much to this. If there are any questions, we certainly answer those.
Okay, so you're confirming that there's no plan for bedrooms for this to be available?
Correct. It's only, it's a half bath. It's going to be a sink and a toilet.
So the first owner is, the owner has a woodworking hobby and it's also to store garden and landscaping equipment, garden supplies underneath, devote storage.
So I'm assuming, given the fact you have water and utilities being provided, it's going to be heated as well?
That's correct. Heated and the first floor of the barn will be cooled so that when he's in there working on his hobbies.
You want to be comfortable.
Exactly.
There is a public order valve on West Lane?
Yes. We have erosion control, sediment control, but the lighting on the exterior of the barn is purposely specified to respect the light dilution requirements so that all the lighting is pointed downward. Neighbors should not see any lights at all.
It's very heavily treated surrounding structures, so it'd be, I have a doubt very much light would get through there.
Thank you. We have a couple of comments from town staff. One is Kevin McGee, if you don't mind, really pushing your screen, Mr. Petra. Appreciate it, thank you. Sean Cosgrove, could you please read Kevin McGee's memo?
David, July 2, Gilford Planning and Zoning Commission, from McGee, environmental planner, very special permit for Bishop and Barry Kaplan, 101 West Lane, Gilbert, Connecticut. That's from map five, lot 31, the empty is devoted to constructing similar perfectly square for the barn. The barn is located approximately 200 feet away from the title wetlands site and provides for erosion and sedimentation control measures that are designed to protect the coastal resources. Stormwater, roof leaders discharped to an underground filtration system. The blue, as erosion control measures are properly maintained, the work being conducted should not have an impact on the title wetlands. For to make sure that the natural resources are protected, I recommend the following conditions of approval. While the town of Guilford, only aborsals should be notified, inspect the sedimentation roof control measures prior to incitements. Soil stockpiles should be contained by salt fencing and/or heat wells. Oil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be aimed at vegetation established or suitable material installed to satisfy action of enforcement. Number two, the town of Guilford zoning enforcement search should be notified and inspect the underground filtration system.
Is that it? Do that set for Kevin McGee memo. Mr. Petra, Mr. Mandell, do you have any problem with those stipulations?
No, not at all. No problem.
And then there's a memo here from Shirley Nickens, planning zoning, July 6, 2022, RA 101, Westlake, map side, lot 31, barn and half bath. The health department's reviewing a PD 100A application for a barn with a half bath at the above address. Barn can be approved by the health department. Now we are in the process of reviewing an engineered plan for a small aging system to allow for the half bath, show the names RS. Oh yeah, memos. Any questions from commissioners?
Can you say a easy one, Jamie?
Have any questions from the public?
We do, we do have a question from the public.
Sure. Thank you for waiting so long, appreciate it.
Oh, was it a while? I hadn't noticed. Good evening, my name is, good evening, my name is Spencer Meyer. I represent the Guilford Land Conservation Trust, of which I'm the president. Our address is PO Box 200, Guilford, Connecticut. I would, would someone from the, from the team, please point on the site plan to the line showing the two different elements of the conservation easement, please, and I will then ask a question. Well, well, Mr. Petra is bringing that up. The Guilford Land Conservation Trust is both a neighbor across the street from West Lane, where we own a property. We also are the holder of a conservation easement on the subject property that I wanted to discuss and ask a couple of questions about.
Chuck, are you?
Yeah, I'm looking at the screen now. Guido, what was that, is zoom in on that green, that line there, the green line, is that scope and work level? Yeah, I don't, okay, so we're showing the title strings, the dashed line. What's that, what's that say around there? If you zoom in on that wording right there, Guido, right where the cursor is, can you read that?
Oh, whackles?
Oh, that's the title whackles, okay. No, this plan does not have that line related on there.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mandell and Mr. Petra. So I am here to point out to the town and make sure the commission is aware that there is a conservation easement across this property and the easement spells out two delineations that I couldn't find on that map or anywhere else in the, and when I spoke to the commission staff, the staff was also not aware that there was a conservation easement. I've looked at the easement carefully and I also had a chance to speak to the property owner earlier today and we've discussed this. The lower portion, the smaller portion of the conservation easement is specifically a title wetlands easement and I think is approximately where one of those dashed lines is on this map, although I'm not sure that's what it's meant to represent. The upper portion of the easement is what's called the residential portion of the easement and is explicitly, explicitly allows one residential dwelling and any customary outbuildings that would typically be allowed in town. And looking through the site plan, it appears, and in speaking with the landowner, it appears that this proposed barn does in fact meet customary outbuildings within town, and I've spoken to staff about that and confirmed that as well. But I do propose a stipulation for this permit that this building can never be turned into a dwelling. It is not currently listed as dwelling and as we just heard, it has a half bath, no kitchen and no bedrooms, but it seems that it would be easy in the future to turn this with simply a building permit into a dwelling and the easement, the conservation easement that we hold forever across this property would not allow that. And so I would propose, as the easement holder across this property, that the commission consider adding a stipulation on this permit that no dwelling is ever created on this property beyond the one residential property in existence. So I'm not sure if that is a speaking in support of with a stipulation or if that's a question exactly, but I wanted to raise those issues. Thank you.
Appreciate your time, thank you. Jamie, do you want to speak? I believe that there, this, any change to make a potential would require a cyclical modification, which would mean that we just would not, we would deny that cyclical modification.
I would also note that the proposed changes for accessory dwelling units are by right in the new, in the changes that are upcoming.
That's correct.
If I could interrupt for one minute, Chuck Mandell, there's already an accessory dwelling unit on the property. So this would be a second one?
This would add a second one, which would not, that's right.
But that cannot be covered.
Okay, thanks, right.
And can I just ask a question? Jamie, sign?
Sure.
How long ago, not that it really mapped to the, I'm wondering how long ago the easement was granted?
I think Spencer can answer that. I don't have the material right in front of me.
Sure, I can speak to that. The easement was granted in 2008, which I believe Mr. Petra said was the same year that the residence was constructed, although I did not know that until tonight. So that's when the easement was granted as a private transaction between the landowner and the Guilford Land Conservation Trust. And I bring this up tonight because there was seemingly no mechanism for the commission to be aware of the easement and indeed, as we saw, it is not on the site plan or at least not clearly labeled. So there would have been no way for the commission to know whether this was or was not allowed by the private transaction of the easement. And that is why I'm requesting a stipulation goes with this permit so that in the future, if a building permit were sought, the commission or whoever the appropriate town body that would approve that would be aware of that because they would not otherwise be aware of the conservation easement.
Thank you.
How easy would it be, or nothing's easy. Chuck, can we put the conservation easement demarcation on the plan?
Oh, absolutely. I think you get the D reference also on plan.
Sorry, thanks. I just, I think that would be excellent reference.
Yep. And originally, this was a three lot subdivision and the new owner, the Kaplans had combined all the lots. So this was, actually put it to one lot and it was two lots above.
Okay, right. So it should have shown up on that, on that plan, right?
Yep.
So it was included lots in the translation of three lots as one?
Well, no, it was just.
Just an oversight, you know, we should have had one.
Okay, right, thanks. So Jamie, I would leave it to you in terms of whether you think that a stipulation like that is something that's warranted versus make sure that it's on the plan.
I would say for certain, I mean, after Mr. Mandell just stated that it was an oversight, that it does need to get on the plan and that would be a condition. I leave it up to you, the discussion of any future dwelling unit. I mean, if there is indeed an accessory dwelling unit already on the property, then our zoning code wouldn't allow it via special permit or as of right with the, with the new upcoming zone changes or zoning regulation changes.
I mean, Scott, I guess my concern is, given the size of this lot, at some point down in the future, someone might have an inclination to subdivide.
Right. The other one, the hesitation is obviously that, you know, we don't typically disclose stuff like that on.
I know, I like, it seems.
Thanks, but this, you're right, this is kind of a special case as well.
You need, it's not the law code, it's not needed because it's not permanent.
Right, right. Right, that's why.
I do, Scott, if I just could say, I mean, just in talking with Spencer about this particularly unique case, you know, I'm just thinking about the trigger points for staff when we're reviewing and as of right building permit, if the easement was not sort of noted on the site plan itself and if we didn't go back and look at the easement and the wording in the easement, because this is a little unique to me, that there's two different zones and one zone of the easement does not allow additional dwelling units. You know, I don't, I don't think we'd be creating a burden by adding this stipulation. It may just be helpful and catching if anything transpires in future that staff would not automatically know.
Okay. Could we have a stipulation that basically just says that staff will be asked to review that easement prior to, you know what I mean? Was saying that we're not allowing additional, more of saying that that needs to be reviewed on any future.
Yeah, yeah, I think it could be, yeah, I'm happy to work with both Spencer and the applicant to arrive at some language that talks about, you know, any future development would be reviewed or to be in accordance with the existing easement stated, ba, ba, ba.
So that is, so it's brought up and made aware, you know, all friends are made aware of it, we're not necessarily just blanket saying that something can't be done.
Yeah, and we don't want to, we don't want to put any language in there that does anything but I think call out the easement.
Correct. I would agree with that.
Commissioner, if I, if I may just say in closing, with that, with that provision, the Guilford Land Trust would like to speak in support of this proposal because it does as proposed, meet the requirements of the conservation easement. We've had a good, healthy relationship with the landowner and we currently have and will continue to reserve the right to walk and serve, inspect the property annually. We don't do it annually now, but we do every so often. And so we would continue to have that right in the future, but overall, we would speak in support of this proposal as laid out. as laid out. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Petra, if you wouldn't mind, I'm just, I'm just sharing the screen so we can see all the rest of the participants, um, is there anyone that would want to speak in opposition to this? Okay, um, so can we, because I, I'd like to take your temperature in terms of, I actually know this is such a premise, so therefore this would refer to public hearings. Assuming that we come up with a, with a, the correct wording for the stipulation for the Guilford Land Trust that we've been discussing, how's everyone feeling about whether or not to waive the public hearing on this one?
They waived it. I'll, I'll move that we waive the second hearing.
Second?
Second.
Okay, they were both vote, definitely. Mr. Johnson?
Does anyone feel strongly that we need to have the easement detailed before we waive this on the map?
The wording of that stipulation?
Not, not, oh, actually, the, the actual location of the easement on the map.
Well, we can make it, we can have that be part of the stipulation that she's going to write out that they are required, prior to this going into effect, they're required to provide an updated site plan, that shows that easement information.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the fact that Land Trust did, comfortable with it.
Okay, I'm just throwing it out.
Appreciate it, thank you. Kevin Clark, you said yes.
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Philip Johnson?
Yep.
Sean Cosgrove?
Yes, sirree.
Frank DeAndrea?
Armane.
Larry Zola?
Yes.
And I also vote yes, thank you very much, welcome, right.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, sirree. Sure.
I'm sorry, before you close the, uh, the item, there was one error on the letters from Kevin McGee.
Yep.
Seven hundred and fifty square foot barn is actually, um, two thousand five hundred ninety-two square feet.
I'm sorry, it's two thousand, what is it, two thousand what?
Two ta, two thousand five hundred ninety-two square feet.
Uh, just a minor error.
It's a math issue.
Um, I, I would imagine that it came up because it's over seven hundred and fifty square feet, and that's more or less the reason why I triggered all of these regulations, probably.
That, that's probably the number you're thinking.
Oh, right.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking it probably still falls well inside the coverage requirements on the fourteen acre site.
Yep, that's one of the-
Correct, the percentage numbers don't change, correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kevin, do you want to close this public hearing outside?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Kevin Clark?
Yep.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Philip Johnson?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
Thank you, Adrian.
Yes.
Larry Zolo?
Yes.
And I also vote yes, thank you very much, welcome, right. Um, all right, last item on our agenda is, uh, Mr. Actar, uh, let me get back to the agenda. Seven, seventy-two steps down Hill Road, map ninety-one lot thirty C, floor zone R five, special permit for a one bedroom, seven hundred and seventy-two square foot, after the fact that says we're part. I, I think it's obvious that Mr. Actar saw, pro, pro, um, Jamie, have you been able, at what point do we need to act on this item, since it's been opened?
Yeah, I would, I mean, I know that we have sixty-five days, but I would, I would like to consult with Attorney Andrus to see what we do in this particular instance.
I appreciate that.
Do we just make a motion to deny? Without prejudice? That way it doesn't, like-
Well, so it's, it's, it's an after fact, though, so, I mean, it's, we, um, it's a, you, everyone needs to hear the whole steps of the case and are depressed in-
Well, if, if they're not here to present, and they haven't shown up, and-
This is, this is a second hearing, they haven't shown up.
Correct.
It's a little bit of a fairness issue, we have people in the public showing their time again, and you can put it off.
Yeah, so if we deny it, then they, even if we deny it with prejudice, they can make an application to come back, but until at such time as they come back, it would be potentially a notice of violation.
Okay.
Any, any harm with tabling?
No.
We get, yeah, because we have a period of time-
Well, there's only sixty-five days.
Between the time that they, their application-
I guess, I guess technically, the, the harm is that we keep on telling the public that they can come and discuss that.
Then, then I, then I think that the cleanest way to do this is to cut it off in the past and do the nothing.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree, I just, I just thought it after the question.
So, so Kevin, we have, I think, Jamie, we have sixty-five days from the day we get an application to act on it, and if for some reason we don't act on it, like, if, if, for whatever reason, you know, the next meeting or two got canceled, we didn't act on it, it would be automatically approved.
Correct.
So-
Okay.
Then we all know.
Are you, are you in on this right now? We should deny it, I mean, this is silly that we, we, he hasn't shown up for two, two scheduled public meetings.
And hasn't commented that, oh, I got a conflict, I can't show up, he's given no notice.
Yeah. I have zero problem with that, I, I just wanted to ask the question.
Just deny it.
The other question, I still have my question for Jamie, is what's our, uh, do we have, within our regulations, do we have a reason for denying that related to him not showing up for it?
Yeah, this is the part that I'm just not certain of, and that I'd like to-
Oh, maybe, maybe they've, they've not presented an application sufficient to be approved before they went into zoning.
There's, there's a lack of information.
Per our regulations, it's not a reason to deny, what I'm saying is, like, we could say that this doesn't conform with the regulations, but we haven't really heard it, so it's not normal.
We had, we, we, what are, what are alternatives? The alternatives are to go approve, deny, and, and we keep delaying.
I'm, I'm not arguing with you, what I'm saying is, I think we need Jamie to tell us to put some research into, you know, what, what-
What is our count, um, Jamie? What day are we on?
What day are we on? Okay, help me out here, so our original meeting on this would have been, uh-
Basically thirty days, I believe, it's been two meetings, so-
Yep, it's been two meetings, so that, that seems about right, thirty days.
I'd be hard pressed to deny it right now.
Yeah, my only concern is, I do know that there are some things that, uh, you know, stick with the denial, so I just, I just really want to be cautious about why we're denying, and if indeed, you know, I do hear from Attorney Andrus that not showing up for, I'll, I'll grant it, one, public hearing, we did, we did have some complications a month ago.
So, and so technically, if we just table it, is that, is that acceptable?
It's running the clock.
Yeah, it's just continuing to run.
But, but, but you check on it.
But in the meantime, it's just going to-
Right, but we need, we need to be aware that if, if for some, you know, for whatever reason, you know, our, our meeting that runs up against the sixty-five day clock gets postponed, canceled, hurricane-ed out, I don't care what you want to say, we're, we're hard pressed, and it's automatically approved.
Can I interrupt for one second? He's going to need to open the sixty-five days for our next meeting.
So there we go.
So one thing, so, Mr. Chair, I think the way- On a meeting for about forty-five days, that doesn't make sense.
When was the application?
She's saying the math, she's saying the math we did here with Jamie earlier, was being correct, isn't she saying?
But I think the way this might-
Hold on, I'm sorry, Kevin had, Kevin had a question.
I, I think the way this might work is, you have two choices when it comes to denial. One is denial without prejudice, right, so which means that if you deny without prejudice, they can actually come back in the future with the same exact application.
Right.
If we deny it, if they come back in the future, it has to be a different application. We have to be very careful how we word it, the denial, that's all.
That's what I've been trying to say, yes. I'm trying to argue about denying it or not, it's more, we need to, what's the correct way for denying?
Right.
Which I don't know off the top of my head.
So I think maybe just deny without prejudice, and that way, I think it automatically leaves it open for them to come back with the same exact application.
Jamie, do you have anything to say about that?
Uh, no, I think that, I just, I just want to be clear that Lisa is, is counting from the date that we received the application, and since this was a public hearing item, it would have gone out, you know, it would have, had to have come to us with significant time before the actual meeting, so that, now that I'm thinking about it, that that does make sense.
That makes sense, yours or Lisa's?
Lisa's.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, I think what Susan said makes me more comfortable about, you know, the clarification about denying without prejudice versus denying.
No, it's actually, it's with prejudice.
With prejudice.
With, with, means you can bring back the same application.
Okay.
That seems counterintuitive, but-
I know, but I, I-
Knowing the time insurance now, I would support that. Yeah, me too, I'm, because if we don't do anything, it gets approved.
Right. Oh, and the other thing it allows Jamie to do is to say, hey, you, you need to show up for this meeting, or you need to make a new application, because right now you've got an existing non-performing.
Understood, Jamie, can we do something to the effect of, can we vote to deny based on the wording that you're going to come up with, which are Andrus?
I'm okay with that, if you're okay with that.
Um, do you want me to make a quick motion and we'll see how it flies, Scott?
Yeah, please.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to deny the application for prejudice, allowing the applicant to come forward again, uh, when in fact they are available to move here. What a commission.
Wait a second.
You got that, Lisa?
I just-
Any discussion?
Just give her, just give her time, I'm just-
Jamie?
Yeah, I just want to, if you could just discuss briefly how you would like to handle the testimony, we've received written testimony from an abutting property owner in opposition, and the couple that was here who showed up a month ago as well.
Well, I, I'm assuming that the, the testimony from those people are, is in opposition?
It's-
I actually don't know about the-
Most of the testimonies related to the procedures of this, and them ensuring that what we approve will actually happen.
Right, so if you're denying it, shouldn't-
Most of their questions are procedural, honestly, but that doesn't make it valid, that just means that, like, to be able to say it, you can reassure them.
The fact that we can't even open without the applicant.
Correct, I mean, regardless, Jamie, I would love an answer from Chuck, in the future, if we are to have these situations, are we doing this in the correct plan, are we supposed to open it and have you present it, or what are we supposed to? That would be for sure. Um, all right, so any other discussion related to the, what's on the table?
Deny with prejudice.
I'm just looking at that now.
To me, like I said, it sounds counterintuitive, but whichever.
Well, in a, in a court, when you deny with prejudice, that means you can't bring that back, that claim back without converting it back.
Right.
But I think for zoning, it's different.
Oh, well, what, regardless, you, you put in a stipulation that this person can come back with the same-
Okay, long as, yeah, long as that stipulation did get that.
Um, so, all right, Kevin Clark?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Philip Johnson?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
Mike DeAndrea, Frank DeAndrea, Mike?
Yes, that's my bill.
Uh, Larry Zolo?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Um, all right, now, we can go to a regular meeting, everyone.
All right.
Whoever said that this was going to be a quick, easy meeting?
That's me, wasn't me.
Did Mike, did Mike say that?
I thought this was your meeting, Scott, no tape change.
Yeah, Scott, your, your tenure has not been-
Yeah, what's going on, man?
Everyone loves to talk, man, I don't know, sorry. All right, so, for, let's see here, would anyone like to make a motion of any kind? Anything? The whole list of them?
Same, hold on.
If you want.
I can pull it up. This, this on one drawing, that's not as fast as one would might hope.
Well, Lisa also, I, I don't have that terrible, well.
Um, so, do we have to go through each of these?
Yes.
Yep.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Sure.
Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a special permit for a five hundred and twenty square foot accessory apartment at one five eight Wildrose Avenue, map seventy, lot two, zone R six. This application is approved with the following conditions. One, the applicant shall file with the town clerk an original copy of the special permit approval to be provided by the planning and zoning department, and shall furnish written evidence to the planning and zoning department that the document has been so recorded prior to the planning and zoning sign-off for building permits.
All right, if I can interject for one second, there's also the stipulations from Kevin McGee's memo, as well as from Shirley McKeon's memo, if I had that in. You don't have to read them, you can just say, add all.
Yeah, I don't have these in front of me.
All right, so you can just say that you're going to include the stipulations from Kevin McGee and from Shirley?
I will include the stipulations from Kevin McGee and the other person?
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The application is approved based on a find, based upon a finding that it conforms with the Town of Guilford zoning code. This approval shall become effective fifteen days after publication of the legal notice of decision.
Wait a second.
Second.
Discussion, issues. All right, Brooklyn Loews, Kevin Clark?
Aye.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Philip Johnson?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Aye.
Frank DeAndrea?
Aye.
Larry Zolo?
Aye.
And I also vote yes, thank you very much. Uh, we're not doing the motion related to Actar, uh, is there a motion related to up code?
Can I ask a question, where are these mummies?
Are you, you, Lisa?
I've got one, both motions.
I've got a motion.
Scott, I'm good.
Okay, one sixty, you got a motion? One sixty-one West Lane voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a special permit for accessory apartment at one sixty-one West Lane, map one oh eight, lot five, at zone R eight. The application approved with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall file with the town clerk an original copy of the special permit approval to be provided by the planning and zoning department, shall furnish written evidence to the planning and zoning department that the document is so recorded, or to the zoning sign-off for building permits. The application approved based on a finding that it forms with the Town of Guilford. Bless you. That's the sound.
Blessing, begging the-
Yeah. The approval shall become effective fifteen days after publication of the legal notice of decision.
She's the worst. Uh, obviously we have a small, sorry. Um, I don't think there was any other stipulations to that one, but I hear a second, so.
Second, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, discussion? I think anyone remembers any other stipulations for this one, Chris? Um, all right, Brooklyn Loews, Kevin Clark?
Aye.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Philip Johnson?
Aye.
Sean Cosgrove?
Aye.
Frank DeAndrea?
Aye.
Larry Zolo?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Uh, we are not talking about three ninety-seven Church Street, uh-
I'll make a motion for equal deal.
Please do.
Proposed motion for Eagleview Homes LLC approval. Voted the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approved special permit modification to allow the combination of units two and three of building A into a single unit with a minor facade improvements or changes at 405 Woodfield Street, map 28, lot 5, as shown on modeling. Eagleview Homes, A and B, 405 Woodfield Street, Guilford, Connecticut, 06437. Ten sheet prepared by SEGA, KRC, dated March 25, 2022, revised May 16, 22. Special permit site plan and coastal site plan application for new multifamily residential development dated October 19, 2021, revised June 17, 2022. Eleven sheet prepared by Lurio Engineering Associates Incorporated. All original conditions of approval dated January 2022 remain. The modification is approved based on a finding that it conforms with the zoning code that is consistent with the coastal management policies of the state of Connecticut. This approval shall become effective 15 days after publication of legal notice of this decision.
One second.
I can say.
Thanks, Mr. Clark, let's go.
I, 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 I know it would be really convenient to have the town staff just be able to make these, you know, changes, but I think if there are significant changes, and I don't know where that line is.
Alright, what's that?
I, I really worry about putting Jamie and/or whomever at risk for making decisions and then being criticized down the road.
Agreed. I think someone had the idea of asking Glenn, and that would be, I think that's a good step to see if he has any suggestions about what the line should be.
I mean, at the end of the day, it's a very minor exterior change and it's a reduction in a bedroom.
But the addition of a boot cross. Again, I just, I don't want to see our staff either be pressured or put in a situation where, you know, they have to make a decision that they're not comfortable with.
Yep. I think we're going to do it.
Look into it.
Alright, Kevin Clark?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Philip Johnson?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Aye.
Frank D'Andrea?
Affirmative.
Larry Zolo?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. We believe we have one more motion from our public meeting.
The Capitol.
Correct.
Voted the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a site plan and special permit for a barn over 750 square feet at 101 List West Lane, map 5, lot 31, R, zone R6. This application is approved with the following conditions. One, the applicant shall file with the clerk an original copy of this special permit approval to be provided by the planning and zoning department, and shall furnish written evidence to the planning and zoning department that the document has been so recorded prior to planning and zoning sign-off for building permits. Two, pursuant to state statutes, this site shall, and associated site improvements, as well as soil erosion and sedimentation control plan rule is valid for a period of five years following the date of the decision until July 6, 2027. Upon petition of this application, the commission may, at its discretion, grant extensions totaling no more than additional five years to complete all work connected to the original approval. Three, a final digital copy, single PDF file, and one printed hard copy of the full site plan shall be submitted to the planning and zoning department prior to the zoning enforcement officer's review and sign-off of the building permits. This application is approved based upon a finding that it conforms to the Town of Guilford zoning code. This approval shall become effective 15 days after the publication of the legal notice of decision.
Thanks, Scott. There was two stipulations from Kevin McGee as well.
Second.
I'm sorry, could we just add the stipulation about the easement will be added to the site plan? And then additionally. Yep, and then this language of perhaps any future development be in accordance with the existing easement dated, I believe he said 2008, something like that.
Can't we just say, you know, subject to documentation of the land easement by the Guilford Land Trust? I mean, that, that's the thing that's not documented right now, correct?
So documented, you mean a copy of the easement, or you mean the line on the site plan?
I mean, the line on the maps.
So it was documented and it was missed in the review?
Yeah, I mean, the easement is filed with the, the town, I mean, the easement exists, it's just not on the site.
Correct. So Chuck said that he would add a note with the, with the, to let us know, I guess, the number of the deed or the easement, and then also that he would show the, the line, and I think that that could fit into the condition, you know, before the ZEO signs off on any building permit, we could add.
Oh, Scott, this one's on you. So, having done these before, like, you've got to make sure before you sign off on the map that, that easement is detailed.
Yep.
Because it's a problem, I have a friend right now in, in Kellingford who has an approved map where the, one of the conditions of approval was never met, and it's a problem.
Yep.
The verb, that's why you get paid the big bucks.
Right, absolutely. Any other discussion? Alright, all votes. Kevin Clark?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Philip Johnson?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Please, yes.
Frank D'Andrea?
Aye.
Larry Zolo?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Alright, let me go back to our agenda. Pending applications, those already, let's see, Julie Fowler, 2545 Long Hill Road, map 105, lot 3, zone R8, requests for a two lot subdivision. Is somebody here to represent Mr. Fowler?
Yes, Chuck Mandell, agent for Julie Fowler.
Burn the middle of that oil, Chuck, thank you.
Yeah, there you go. So, I do have a map, and I'll attempt to share it. If I can't share it, someone's going to have to bail me out, because I did, I just emailed it to Jamie. So let me hit screen, would you share a screen?
You can bring it up if you, if you can.
Yeah, why don't you, I didn't do that. To save some time. My kids just laugh at me, you know, it's too old for this stuff.
Alright, forgot.
Thank you, Scott. So if you want to zoom in a little bit. So, yeah, that's alright. Oh, it's a 15 acre piece. You can see there was a split by right that was done many years ago, that little piece that came out along Long Hill Road. This is right at the intersection of Route 80 and Long Hill Road, across the street from the gas station. We have, we've got Wetlands not approval for the finished site plan, but we have a Wetlands referral that in concept, they did agree to this, and Kevin was there. We also got a letter from Shirley today, not for the final design, but certainly for that there adequate soil on there to support a two-bedroom system. The other thing about this is it's in, it's in an R8 zone, but that lot is actually meets the R7 criteria. Based on section 273-25 of the Guilford zoning code, each lot in residential R8 districts shall have the area shape and properties specified in Table 3, and the right to subdivide into R7 lots. And that was as of July 1985. You can read the rest of the rights if you wish. Actually, well, if you can see, this is actually in the roadbed of the old Route 80 toll road. You can see there's a double stone wall. I don't know if you can see it or not, Scott.
Yep.
If you can. Yep, there you go, scroll down a little bit.
As far as we have.
Okay, that's fine. You can see those little circles on each side of the house. So that's, that's the stone wall, so that was the old roadbed for the toll road, and that's where most of the development will be. We do not have approval from the state of Connecticut for driveway encroachment, but typically the state will not even look at these plans until there's an approved lot there, because they don't want to waste their time on, you know, maybe it gets denied, that type of thing.
Hey, Chuck, Chuck, is this, is this on the north side of?
Yes, yep, it's on the north side of Route.
It's across the, yeah.
And so it's inside the lot.
That's interesting, because I thought, I thought the toll road ran along, because I walked through the land on the south side of Route 80, and that's where the old toll road, toll road was.
I, I think it cuts, it cuts across.
There's a cross right there.
There's a cross right there, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, because you can see the direction is heading southeast on there, so that's where it cuts off.
And that, where it cuts across is where the property that the town bought, which is the proposed new public works site.
Across the street?
Across the street.
Yes, yeah, I believe so. It's going to be a very modest house there. Due to the proximity to Wetlands, it's going to be a very small footprint, and I believe Ms. Fowler was just looking for a place for her daughter to move into, as opposed to doing, just a 800.
It is, it is wet on the north side of Route?
It's actually completely wet, except for the upland areas that are shoveling on the map. And, and the building setback lines really kind of force us into that position. So where it's located, where that house is proposed, is really the only place it could go in that subdivision.
Scott, Kevin Clark for the commission, what's the relevance of the box, the lot 2 box?
So that, that just represents a building square, and that's required for zoning. Maybe Jamie could explain that a little bit better, why they have the, the building squares in there. So for an R8, it's 300 by 300, and for the R7, it's 200 by 200. A lot of towns, they call that, actually, that box is not allowed to be within a Wetlands area, right? Or within setbacks, but Guilford does not have, it's called a MABEL, minimal area for building lots. So Guilford does not have that MABEL designation.
In other words, we don't exclude non-buildable areas.
Correct. It's more, it's more for a lot shape, I believe.
So you're dwelling in, everything that goes with, doesn't have to be in that lot, obviously?
Correct. You just have to demonstrate that whole thing within that lot. They said other other towns, Kevin, you require that the house be within that square.
Okay. Interesting.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, so we have a memo from Kevin McGee, environmental planner, already. This, this application applicant is proposing a 15.35 acre parcel and two building lots to add 2.37 acres parcel to be developed and existing well to consist of 12.98 acres. The applicant has completed the checklist to guide level, impact level, best practice, best management practices, and is evolving several of the recommended practices. The applicant shows, plans show that they're maintaining a vegetation outside the immediate construction area which provides for vegetated buffer to the wetlands, and are infiltrating roof water into an underground infiltration system. Neither the application nor the site plans indicate the requirements for open space dedication. A majority of the property, the subdivision, contains inland wetlands. The proposed house location would be approximately 4 to 4 feet from the wetlands, and all of their infrastructure would be greater than the 50 feet from the wetlands. At the inland wetlands commission meeting on June 8, 2022, the commission referred favorably to the planning zoning commission that the subdivision shown on map title subdivision prepared for Julie Fowler assessors map 105, lot 1, 2, 2545 Long Hill Road, Guilford, Connecticut, dated November 7, 2021, prepared by Towns, Estates, Students and Associates, with the condition that, that an inland wetlands permit would be needed for the development of the property. See copy of inland wetlands referral letter for recommended conditions of approvals to the planning zoning commission. Recommendations for, conditions of approval. One, the Town of Guilford zoning enforcement officer should be known to have to expect the implementation of erosion control measures prior to site work. Soil piles should be contained by silo fencing or hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until legislation is established or supplemental materials installed to set up protection, zoning enforcement officer. Two, the condition from the inland wetlands commission that it will be placed on, on final subdivision plans indicate that an inland wetlands permit will be needed for the development of the lot. And three, to meet the subdivision open space requirement, I recommend the applicant pays the fee in lieu of land in accordance with the Connecticut general statutes, section 825. Payment for the fee in lieu shall placed in the Town of Guilford by acquisition fund in accordance with provisions of Connecticut general statutes, section 8-25B. Do you want to speak to open space requirements, Chuck?
Yeah, I, I heard a lot of discussion with this commission in regards to that, and I'm not really sure where you guys left off. I must have missed a couple meetings. I, I know, are we still able to ask for the waiver of that condition? Is that still on the?
We, we kind of, we kind of put a hard L on that.
Okay.
And we're moving towards a standard.
10% of the assessed value.
Correct.
Okay, and I was wondering, because I heard a lot of discussion, but that's never really figured out, because I, I know, but I could talk to my client in regards to that, in regards to dedicating the 10%, but I mean, I don't know why the land trust would want any part of this.
Well, I think that actually has to do with the fee in lieu versus the dedication of land.
Yeah, correct, because there's, there's really no viable, there would be no advantage to open space on this parcel. So I imagine we'd be stuck with the fee in lieu of like.
Correct, so it's, it's, but who's, us as a commission decide whether or not to waive, but also whether or not to, basically, we're the deciders of whether or not the town, the open space to the town. Technically, we're the deciders, not the town itself. Correct, Jamie?
Correct, yep.
And then, as far as the fee in lieu, we're leading on the Connecticut general statutes for now, 10%.
Basically, the idea, Chuck, is we wanted to provide developers guidance as to what this would be. So if you're looking at a number, it's not, you know, you've got a number to take back to your client, say, look, if you want to do this, here's what it's going to be. Here's your assessed value, you're, you know, it's not discretionary.
Correct.
Okay, so, so if the fee in lieu, now who comes up? Is that from the assessor's cards? Because I always said, I was going to fringe of those discussions of how to determine.
So, so technically, it's a third-party assessment agreed upon between the, the permit office and your client. Right, Jamie?
Adjourned on by the commission and the applicant, and in the, that's okay. And in the most recent precedent, Chuck, would be the Ruth Nettleton estate. The commission did have quite a bit of back and forth about if the assessor's value for the property could be considered a third-party appraisal, and I believe the commission agreed to that.
We did.
So the assessed value on, I believe, on the parcel we're talking about, I believe, I'm looking at the property card right now, 150,006.
Right.
Okay, so, if I, if I can ask, so if my client decided to say, okay, you know what, I don't want to pony up the 10%, but I, I'll just give the 10%, or I could dedicate some land, would that option still be open if you voted tonight? So I can go either fee in lieu or dedicate a section to open space?
I think it's up to the town side if they want that open space, so that.
Also.
Okay, I, I agree, because like I said, I don't think the town, I got a conflicting message from Scott that said it's up to.
Also, it's correct, it is the commission. However, the testimony that we've heard to this point from our town staff has been that they would not be interested in dedicating these to the land, so I, we could poll all the commissioners, but I think.
No, I, I don't, I'm just, I don't think that's, that's kind of wasting time, because there's no advantage to having any part of this land to the land trust.
Correct, and again, like I said.
Or, 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 or.
Again, like I said, we're trying to set a standard that everyone can kind of assume is what our answer is going to be.
Okay, so for now, let's take the 10%.
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll be, okay.
Excuse me, Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we have the dollar amount for the minutes?
Can we have the dollar amount for the minutes?
Uh.
For the fee in lieu?
Well, are we going off the assessed value, you have the assessed value?
I'm sorry, I'll interject here, I don't think we need the numbers, just to be.
We don't need to.
Yeah, we've got the, the calculation.
Okay.
We have the language, um, I think we've used the language for this stipulation on a previous, uh, commission. There was one other memo, uh, to Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, Shirley Minkins, are in this project, health department is in the process of reviewing the subdivision surface. Soon as you swip to plan, there was a code complying area demonstrated on both lots, therefore, health department is approving subdivision. That's Scott, okay. Any questions for Chuck, for anyone? All right, uh, anything, any last words, Chuck?
No, the commission has any question, just come to it.
Hopefully, I was not your last.
All right, then anyone like to propose a motion? Last page.
I would vote, the Gilbert Planning and Zoning Commission approved a two-lot subdivision application for Julie Fowler at two five four five Long Hill Road, map one oh five lot three, zone R dash eight. This application is shown on subdivision, prepared for Julie Fowler, assessors map one oh five lot one, two, two five four five Long Hill Road, Gilbert, Connecticut, sheet C one unquote, prepared by Anthony Boldak, uh, Thomas A. Stevens and Associates dated nine seven twenty-one, revised six sixteen twenty-two, is approved with the following conditions. One, the applicant shall record the town, record on the town land record, the final record subdivision map and shall furnish written evidence to the Planning and Zoning Department that the document has been so recorded prior to planning and zoning sign-off of the building permits. The final digital copy, single file PDF, and one printed hard copy of the record showing subdivision map shall be submitted to the Planning and Zoning Department prior to the zoning enforcement officer's review and sign-off of building permits. Three, prior to site work of the zoning enforcement officer shall be notified to respect the sedimentation and control measures. Soil stockpiles shall be contained by silo fencing and/or hay bales. Soil erosion, sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable materials installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. Four, all building permits issued for subsequent subdivision lots shall incorporate all stormwater management features as approved on subdivision plans. Five, per Gilbert subdivision codes, section two seven two dash forty-one D, fee in lieu of land dedication, a fee in lieu of land shall be paid to the land acquisition fund of the town in accordance with section eight dash two five of Connecticut general statutes amended. The fair market value of land shall be subdivided, shall be determined by an appraiser jointly selected by the commission and the applicant. Payments shall be made at the time of the sale of each approved parcel of land within the subdivision. This application is approved based upon a finding that it conforms to the subdivision code of the town. This approval shall become effective fifteen days after publication of legal notice of the decision.
Very second. Clear. Thank you, sir, any more discussion?
I, I guess the only question I have is the, the fee in lieu of, if Jamie's comfortable with, um, making sure we get that properly documented by the.
Uh, I think as long as we have on the record that you're agreeing that the town's assessed value is indeed a, a fair market, third-party appraised value, we can work the ten percent from.
I think that for the time being, that's the broader that we're going on.
Yeah.
But why don't we say that in the motion?
As opposed to just saying, we're gonna take them, I mean, we're, we're trying to create the, the criteria, the framework for the collection of the fee as opposed to just, we're gonna collect the fee.
Right, well, and so the, the, what's been said in the motion is that we're allowing the commission and the, uh, applicants to come up with the third-party assessor and in this case, we're disagreeing that the town assessment is the third party. Basically.
Which has a general statement is, is a pretty favorable value for the applicant. And I think, you know, we don't want to be burdensome, but. We're doing that.
Right. Um, any discussion? All right, uh, will vote, Kevin Clark?
I'll abstain on this one.
All right, Ted Sands?
Yes.
Philip Johnson?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes, sir.
Larry Zolo?
Yes.
Absolutely, yes, thank you, Chuck, appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Keith Fisher, thirteen fifty-five Boston Post Road, map six two lot seven, zone R five, zone boundary change from R five to PB two, proceed at public hearing for July twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two, any other motion?
Uh, shall vote?
Second, third.
Frank, is it?
I.
One favor.
Favor.
No, Frank, is this, the PB two is where your new place is going?
Yeah.
It is the PB two.
That's correct.
So what, just now that we have any, where is this property?
Thirteen fifty-five Boston Post, uh.
It, it's part of, uh, part of property that is, is part of the Red Barn project you've got going on, I think.
But the, the red barn is, it's gotta be.
Yeah, it's where the red barn is.
It's gotta be, but so that, the red barn's not a residential lot?
No, the, the proposal is actually for the, quite a, a large acreage, uh, that is in between the kind of triangle that's formed by ninety-five Boston Post Road and Long Hill Road.
It's not just the Red Barn, the entire facility there, that's a whole, that whole lot.
A whole lot that's encompassing the orchard and the existing building?
That's a lot, it's a huge lot.
Well, I guess we'll have some interest in discussion, hopefully.
Yes, we will. Yeah.
Well. I mean, what we're voting on is putting it.
Right, well, we're, we're.
We're just receiving it.
And we hear this, yes, and I think we should, we should definitely hear it.
We just received it, so everybody's a yes.
Aye.
New applications, uh, two thirty to two twenty-three two water street LLC, two thirty water street, map six two lot ninety-seven, zone MR one, set type demolition of existing marine store to be replaced in kind and add a twenty-four by thirty-six addition to the driveway, or you can take your invoice, you're receiving that. Uh, mandatory referral, who's taking the raise on this, Jamie?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Mandatory referral? Do you want to see your raise?
It's a property at the corner of, of, of Lake Drive and so-and-so, it's point five eight, point, point five eight acres. Uh, it is crucial to the construction, in the south end of Lake One O'Clock.
Uh, the mandatory for referral reads, uh, dear Scott, in accordance with the Connecticut general statutes, section eight dash twenty-four, I'm forwarding the following request to you for your consideration. At your July sixth, twenty twenty-two meeting, mandatory referral of order selection at its June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two special meeting, recommended to the Planning and Zoning Commission under CGS eight dash twenty-four, the purchase of a, uh, I assume that means point zero five eight or point five.
It's point, point five.
Point five eight parcel of the property located at thirty-four thirty-one Durham Road, identified office as map sixty-two lot one, thank you for your consideration. Um, so I want to make a, make a motion to approve this.
Move.
Second?
One favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All vote, all posts?
There is a letter from Kevin McGee.
It is there. We jumped the gun. Town of Gilbert is looking to purchase the point five eight acres property located at thirty-four, uh, thirty-one Durham Road, located in the track south of Lake One O'Clock, bounded by Durham Road, Lake Drive and Hoopole Road. This property is valued with the town for necessary repairs to the dam at the south end of Lake One O'Clock, the culvert, and the realignment of the intersections with the realignment of the road. The town would be able to create a park at the south side of the lake. And we've already heard it, so good job, Keith.
All right. Thanks, Chuck.
Is that that really awkward bridge? I kind of like that bridge, mightn't lie, but. Whatever. Okay, uh, thanks, my gentleman. Uh, approval minutes? Anyone? Anyone review?
I, I, I normally approve the minutes as submitted.
I believe that Kevin Clark then will second that.
Any discussion? All papers ahead?
Aye.
All posts? All abstain? Which passes? Uh, anybody else, Jamie, before we go?
Any ZEO stuff?
Uh, no, actually, no ZEO stuff, but I will update that the job description is on the human resources desk for our new assistant town planner. Uh, we've changed the name of the role, uh, from zoning enforcement officer to assistant town planner, and I hope to get that out.
It would include that all, right?
Yes, 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 yes.
Is that in order to, like, people to apply, that no one else?
Correct.
Yes, I'm quite surprised.
Just checking.
Although I have, we have, we have added different responsibilities and spread out other responsibilities, so it's not just a name change.
I want to say, you don't, no.
Well, and Jamie, you can, I mean, with that title, you can get it up off your desk.
Correct.
All right.
Aye.
Seeing other business, entertaining, most of the journey, please.
Oh, of course.
All favor.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, man.
Appreciate you.
You're on the clock, you're on the clock, you're on the mission, man.
We made it under the, under the second ta, change, so I feel like we did good.